Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session for December. Thank you for coming in today. Before we get started with our meeting, I'd like to do a moment of silence to honor President George H.W. Bush. As we all know, he had his funeral services today. So if we could just pause for a moment and remember our president? Thank you. We have a personnel matter that we need to take a vote on, and we're going to go ahead and proceed with that. Let's see here. Okay, we're going to pull up the motion real quick. You don't have the motion on hand, Mr. Budsby? Okay. Oh, Jack. Oh, hi, Jack. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, Madam Chair. In the matter of the teacher grievance heard on October 18th, 2018 by our hearing officer appointed by the school board, I move that the board accept the superintendent's modified recommendation by issuing a letter of reprimand to the teacher as a disciplinary consequence, which is consistent with the hearing officer's written decision dated on October 31st, 2018.
Chair, second?
Second.
Buds, would you please call the role? Thank you.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move into our policy discussion. We know that we have several policies that were carried over from July from the Virginia School Board Association, and there were a few others that the policy committee wanted to bring forth to our attention. Very appreciative of their work on these very important issues. When we first started in July, we had so many things on our plate as a new board coming together. And one of those topics was going through training to understand what the responsibilities of school boards are. One of the big responsibilities that we have is policy. Proper policy recommendations, adaptation, implementation leads to good governance. And so we want to make sure that we are all in alignment with that process. So as things have been moving forward with our decision-making, we wanted to kind of take a step back because there were some members who had questions about how policy is recommended, what the process is for the committee. And I thought that this would be a good time to take a step back and just kind of review those processes. So we have a policy committee that the board formed a couple of years ago with Mr. Jordan's recommendation and Dr. Boone's recommendation to try to streamline some items that the board needed to have some better efficiency on. And as a part of that process, we decided to have a representative from the board, two representatives from the board on that team. Policies that come through the Virginia School Board Association are vetted through the policy committee. The policy committee also has Mr. Cloud serving on it, as well as Dr. Bergsong. And if I'm leaving out any staff, are there any other staff members that?
And our board clerk.
And our clerk. So they meet. The meetings are posted on Board Docs. The policies that they are reviewing are also on Board Docs. And we pay for a service from the Virginia School Board Association to help us to make sure that our policies are in correct standard legally with the Virginia code. And so they send forth policy recommendations to us. Comes through the policy committee. The policy committee then brings forth recommendations or suggestions or any of the adaptations to us at board meetings. We try to, on the work session, which is the first Wednesday of our month, to talk about those recommendations and let the whole board weigh in on what the recommendations are and to gather if board members have any questions or concerns. But also, on that note, we can bring forth policy recommendations as board members. Citizens can bring forth recommendations. Employees can bring forth recommendations. And with that being said, I kind of wanted to turn it over to our members of the policy committee for you all to talk about how things have been going thus far and kind of bring us up to speed as to how you all have been working the session, how you feel going forward. This is something that you want to continue, which happy to do so if there are any other recommendations that you have. So I'll turn it over to you. Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Just one clarification. The policy committee was already established when I arrived. It wasn't established under that.
Thank you.
So just to, you know, reiterate, you know, as Dr. Gabriel mentioned it is one of our, this seems louder than usual. So the policy committee was formed, you know, many years ago to streamline, as Dr. Gabriel already mentioned. But really not to scrutinize to the point, you know, via SBA's policies, but to really highlight the things that might be controversial or might be something of particular attention to us here in Norfolk. And so we do review all of the policies that come through. And in rare instances, there may be new policies that may come up, you know, like you said, you know, via the community, via our data, you know, and we try to make data-informed decisions and use that to guide our policy development. And even trends that we're seeing in terms of our practice, the practices that are going on. Do we, are we clear in our policies? Are we, you know, defining things appropriately? Those types of things are things that the policy committee can look at and think of ways of strengthening based on, you know, not only state code, but what some of the model policies are out there on a variety of topics. So new policies, though, and I think that is an area that I would like for the board to be on the same page because it's not, my understanding, coming on the board myself, was not that the policy committee was to initiate or recommend new policies, but that the board, that we would vet it among the board and then recommend or direct the policy committee to do the research or to look at what best practices are around any policy. And so that's how the policy committee had been operating. And as far as I'm concerned, that still, you know, remains the process. That we review VSBA policies. There are policies that we discuss here as a board that board members can direct the policy committee to go and look at and to come up with recommendations back to the full board. But it is an opportunity for the board to weigh in on what is coming down from VSBA and if there are new policies that are needed. So nothing has changed. So we haven't had the opportunity as a new board to really discuss if that process is something we want to maintain or if folks feel that a new process is needed. So I think that's something that we need to clarify, and I would like to get clarification on that. You know, I think we've gotten a little bit out of process. For instance, you know, in asking questions within a policy committee meeting, you know, I inadvertently, you know, had asked questions about specific policies which can direct the administration to then act in going back and looking at practices and determining whether there are changes needed to a policy. And while that act is okay, you know, it should be done here in the full board and not in a committee because then we could technically all do that, you know, where the administration could get recommendations from seven individual board members without each of us knowing what and why a recommendation is being made, which is why the process was in place to alleviate that piece of it. So I would like to maintain that. I'm opening it up for discussion if there are, you know, reasons to change it or if we're agreeing that the process is good as it stands. But that's been the process so far, and we're, you know, ready to prepare and discuss, I mean, if there are questions. I don't know if Ms. Martin has something to add to that.
Yeah, I mostly agree with you. I'm just not, I think that, you know, we want to make sure that all of our policies are working how they're intended to work and so, you know, being implemented. And so, you know, having those discussions in the policy meeting, I think, is really exactly where we should, where we should be having those, you know, conversations with the staff to ensure that that, that our intentions are being implemented correctly through our policies. So, yeah, I don't, I mean, obviously, we do have in our norms that we want, you know, if there's a big data request, you know, that we need to vote on that as a board. But having those conversations just allows the policy committee to learn more from the administration and to share information. So asking about policies and how they're working, I mean, I don't see that as being a hindrance.
Right. And I agree. I just, I agree that that aspect of it. But when the question is maybe taken as a direction or directive, I should say, to the administration to go back and look at their practices and then come back, I think that...
Oh, so more of an evaluation?
Yeah, more of an evaluation. I think that that could be a, that is a discussion that should be had here based on, and then they could say, yes, you know, we need to go back and look at these policies. They haven't been updated in X number of years, which we know we've had, which is how the policy committee came to be, is that we knew we had policies that were, hadn't been updated in God knows how long, and we, you know. So that was, you know, the policy committee. I know this is way before I was on the board, and Mr. Jordan can attest to it. The number of hours and the time and work that went into trying to update and go through all of those policies, and as you know, we have hundreds of policies. So just making sure that we're also not inundating the administration with doing work that we may not all agree needs to happen, and it may not need to happen at that point in time. So I think that's why a full board discussion with the administration is how we've been, I think, operating really well in that respect. And Dr. Boone, if you have any thoughts or ideas for changing that process or if you agree, you know, I'd love to hear your input as well.
Well, I think it's important that we're having this discussion and having it in presence of members of the senior team and the district leadership team because, again, if it emerges through a discussion in a committee, you know, we're looking to see, is this a direction that we need to go in? Certainly, a couple of policies that conversation was generated around recently were policies that hadn't been reviewed in a while, and certainly, I find that reviewed to be timely and appropriate. So we don't have any issues with that. I just simply, again, if something new is coming to the table, that we're giving a heads up so we know how best to prepare and support the discussion.
No, oh, Ms. Martin answered. Rodney Scott.
Yeah, my only, well, I won't say my only, well, part of my thought on that is if the committee determines that there's something that needs to be researched or reevaluated, that the committee would come back and just recommend to the board that that's what it wants to do, and then the board would just say, okay. I mean, it just gives the opportunity for consideration for the full board because there may be some other things that other members may have thought about or had gotten information on that would also like to be considered. So I think if the committee, as a result of its work, finds that there's a policy that warrants review or if the superintendent wants to come forward and alert the board that there's a policy that she would like to have reviewed to just inform the board that that's what's going to occur, gives the opportunity for that to take place and everybody be aware of it and in tune with it. You know, every time we have these discussions around the role of committees, you know, the experts always warn against having the committee operating in a manner in which the full board is not engaged with it. So I think if there is a recommendation or somebody wants to bring forward a policy or a new idea and then having the board endorse it, go into the policy committee for review, I think it gives the committee the opportunity to do that. It gives the full board the opportunity to be aware. And most importantly, it also gives the administration the opportunity to share with the board what resources and time may be required to complete that process. It could be something that comes back in 30 days. It could be something that comes back in six months. But I just think we always have to be mindful that we aren't sending the administration off to work on something that we, as a board, aren't prepared to act upon after they do that work.
Having recommendations, if it's something that's a new policy or a policy that you actively want to be revisited or looked at, that you bring it forth to the board and say, how does everyone feel about sending that over to the policy committee for them to review it? And then the policy committee takes a look at it and brings their thoughts back to the board.
That would just simply be referred to a committee, which is standard process.
Practice, right.
I mean, I don't have an objection with that. And I think, and if I may, Madam Chair, I agree with Mr. Jordan in the respect that if recommendations for action or proposals, that we need to do additional, you know, research or we need to direct the staff to do certain things, should come directly from the committee, back to the board, and then the boards, everyone has an opportunity. You know, and that, even the sort of the respect that the administration can see that there's a full majority of the board that says that, yes, we agree with this and we should move forward with it. I do want to clarify, though, on the front end around the aspect of an individual board member has something that they want to research or that they want to have looked at, that I think that we should disagree that the standard protocol should be, you know, bring it to the board here and then, you know, with the board here, with the, really with the recommendation for it to go to the committee. And then that, again, allows the board an opportunity. Though we identify two individuals from the board to represent us and do work at the committee, and I'm a strong believer in committee work and that really that the board should be taking action. That's what happens when we get here for discussion and actual action and direction. So just making sure that we are clear as a board, as a standard protocol, that if we're here. But that doesn't mean that in the committing, because you are two committee members, that things may come up within your committee meetings. And if it, you know, comes up, doesn't preclude you from having a discussion about it. But if it's going to have additional work that needs to happen, that we just have the protocol that it comes back to the board and that we vote on it.
I mean, I trust you all to represent us well. That's why, you know, we are delegating the work out. We're each bringing our knowledge and background into that. And so if there is something that comes up in a policy and you think that you need to ask further questions about it to gain knowledge on that policy to better inform us when you come back, I would say I'm fine with you all doing that. You know, if it's to go off and do something completely separate, no, you need to come back to the board.
Right, absolutely. And... Go ahead. Well, I was just going to reiterate that Mr. Clanton, you know, highlighted exactly what, you know, I wanted to make clear is that with the new policy, what that protocol should be. Because I know there's been some interest to look at a couple of policies that have been raised. And so, you know, I know that research is being done to look at other divisions, what other divisions are doing, and then you bring it back. You know, this is a model policy, for instance, like I've done in the past. I've brought model policies forward for consideration to direct or refer to committee to then say, you know, how does this fit in? What are we already doing? Do we already have this policy? Which is also part of that research. And so I think, you know, I'm on board with that. But I do think full board knowledge about what's happening, what the policy committee is working on is, you know, the process we should be taking.
So I guess, maybe this is all too obvious for me. Like, I feel like I'm missing something here. The, so I guess maybe I'm not clear on the timeline that is being discussed because you all should be aware of the policies that we're discussing because they're posted on Board Docs.
That's kind of, if I may, that was one of the things I brought up this morning. We have a lot of things that are on Board Docs. Unless you go in that particular meeting, it's not kind of there all together. And so I want to really interject this idea of creating programs of work, which is literally a single document. If it's our educational planning task force, if it's the policy committee that really lists the items that are being worked on currently or things that are in the pipeline that we want to look at and putting some real timelines around it that any of us as a board member could look at and say, oh, policy committee is looking at all of these policies right now, and we're anticipating these items coming up. Or educational planning is looking at these particular items here, or whatever committee it may be. I just feel like we do have a lot of information, but just in a way that even for ourselves and the general public, you can kind of see it in a succinct location. And I'd be more than happy just to kind of provide an example of what that would look like. But it's not a creating a work. I think that it really helps to kind of hone it in and streamline it for us. Because I'll be honest, sometimes we hear certain things like, you know, policies are coming up. And I'm like, okay, well, where exactly was that at? And it may have been posted on Board Docs somewhere down there. But, you know, just how it makes us a better board member to be able to see it all at one time and just from a high-level dashboard kind of way of being able to see this is where we're going and to have discussion on it. It's just one of my recommendations.
Okay.
If I may, just to respond, so part of what occurs when Ms. Bassin was describing the, it just depends upon sometimes the time of the year, what may be coming from VSBA in particular because particularly they will provide that update. So the update could have 10 policies on it, could have 50 policies on it. So there is a document that comes out from VSB overall that I think goes to all board members and kind of say, these are, this is an update that's coming. We wouldn't necessarily know how the committee decided to prioritize, let's say if it was 40 policies, which 10 you may be bringing to a work session. So the way that we had been operating and pretty much is everything that we've talked about thus far is if the committee, you all may meet several times before something comes to a work session. So you may be going through those policies. The administration is going through those policies. And you may come with a recommendation like we have today that some set of policies are ready for work session consideration. So if we were to see all 100 or all 40, it, you know, it could, it then drags us back into what we were trying to kind of streamline when we created the process. So it is true that, you know, as a board, we can go into Board Docs. We can always find out what the policies are. The hope in having the committee was that you all, in working with the administration, would be able to prioritize those policies, sometimes against time, sometimes against other factors, and then bring those four for work session consideration so that prioritization would still come from the committee.
I think that's what we are doing, though, right?
I do, too. I don't know what's broken.
So if you look under the policy committee meeting, those list the policies that we're reviewing, and those are the policies that we're going to, you know, then it goes on to the agenda. So...
Yeah, we have VSBA updates and then anything else that may be, you know, outside of the VSBA updates. And we used to have, you know, a parking lot, a tab which were, you know, if there was something that the board, a board member recommended or something came up in our data that suggested that we might need to look at a particular policy, we always had a parking lot piece. And anyone, any board member could go and look and see what exactly was happening. And it's, as far as I can tell, I mean, I've been able to access it, and I hope all the other, I hope you've been able.
Yeah, I don't think that it's the access piece down there. I'm just, when I look at certain things, it's just, I think that there's a way of fine-tuning it. And that's all my recommendation is, is that there's a recommendation of being able to fine-tune. Not saying that it's totally wrong, but how we might be able to even improve the process. And so, I mean, I don't want to belabor it on that particular item for myself down there, but, you know, I'll share what I was thinking. And then, you know, if you all think, oh, you know, this looks good, or if not, then it's totally fine. But I'm just saying for some best practices that I've seen, you know, because you could see a policy item that it's in review or, you know, we haven't taken this one up, or there's a date on it that we're even looking at, you know, bringing this up down there. I just, not just policy committee, but just committees in general and just how we even overall report out what's happening in committees. Every month, everyone's going to have an audience, an opportunity to get before us. But how do we report that out to keep board members abreast on a continuous basis of what's happening so that we're better prepared and when we get here to be able to take the necessary, have the in-depth conversation and to take action on it?
Can I just add? So part of the policy process is sometimes there's some discussion about, you know, something either comes up here, it comes up in public comment, that, you know, in the policy committee, you say, okay, maybe that's something we should look into. What is our policy on that? Is it working well, you know? So these are just, so at that point, though, when that initial, it's bubbling up, conversation's happening, there is no necessarily documentation. It hasn't arisen to that yet. So there is maybe a little gray space where not everybody knows and we don't even know because we're trying to figure out whether or not we're going to discuss that policy. But once that decision is made, it's, you know, it's posted on the committee meeting. And so that should spark the timeline of, you know, how that work process flows. But, you know, of course, if there's a better one, I'm open to exploring that, but that's just where that is. So if there's any unknowns, it's probably because it just hasn't formulated quite yet.
And like, I'll use, I'll use just really quickly, you know, the dress code piece. You know, I asked, you know, in the beginning of the year, we always get a lot of feedback. And I say a lot of loosely, you know, so you take it with a grain of salt. But, you know, we get feedback about dress code. And so, you know, asking the question, you know, what are policies? Is there, are there any recommendations to change the policy? Which is, you know, how it came up, just as you stated, you know, asking, is it working? Do we need to change it? And instead, you know, should we come back here and say, you know, what do you think? Should we look at this policy? Do we need to look at this policy? It should happen here. It was okay to ask it in there, but, you know, to give the directive, you know, could you go back and look at or talk to the administration to see if it needs to happen versus it happening here was, you know, that's, I'm just using myself and what I, how I communicated that piece, but...
But we're already, I mean, by doing that, we're already discussing it.
Yeah, right.
Should we? Well, let's look at it and see, and then we bring it here. So, I mean, it's really falling into the same process that we have.
Yeah, which is, okay, and the superintendent, you know, as she stated, she has recommendations around that, so...
So I think this is good. I think we need to go ahead and wrap this piece up and then move on to the actual policies that we need to discuss.
I did have one last thing that I did bring up in agenda planning, and that's the recommendation around having it be standard for first and second reading around policies. And that's just so that we can be transparent around that. We give ample time for public comment about any policies that we have, just much like what we did with the tobacco one that we're doing. I just feel like it's good standard process.
You said all policies?
Yeah, I think that we may see that there's some things that come from VSBA which are small grammatical things like that, that I think that as a board, we can say, you know what, we're going to vote to let these go through. But I think anything that's new particularly, we should really take a stance of having a first and a second reading just to allow for time for comment.
A majority of our policy changes are reference changes and grammatical changes. But I think it came up with the social, more social policies. Those were the ones that we talked about had for public comment, like the smoking.
Right, and we've been doing, I think we've been pretty consistent with our practice with having hearings around those that are viewed as more controversial or more, you know, that impact, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at as we're compiling for that handbook piece to come back on how we're kind of doing things internally, that we kind of get a generalization on that. So if it's VSBA standard kind of grammatical things that they're doing, that that wouldn't be a first and second. But anything outside of that, that we would probably automatically enter into, that would be a first or second reading.
Let Dr. Boone go, and then we're going to wrap this up.
I just want to piggyback on the first and second reading piece. And I think it's been clarified that new policies or policies that have significant impact, I would hate to see us bottleneck those that we don't, the board doesn't really have any choice around. And those are mostly around legal updates. Grammatical changes are minor, but usually what we see are legal reference updates. And those are to make sure that our policies are current. We can't challenge the law once it's been made, at least at that point, until another process. I just didn't want to see us bottleneck policies with first and second reading for those that are pretty much those legal reference updates, those type of minor changes. But I agree, I was going to reference the tobacco policy and the associated products policy, I think is an example of where, you know... policy, I think is an example of where, you know, we, we've made it very open with the public, we did it with the portion of it that was adopted last year, and now with where we're headed this year, and I think that's, that's a really good example that, that we can model our own selves behind.
But I would also like to show an example that I don't think that this board did a very good job on, and that was the last meeting in June, where there were several policy items that were taken up, and that didn't go through the normal process that you all had established. And I don't know if it was timing or whatever else, but there were several policies taken up at the, they, yeah, and so, just kind of.
What, what aspect of it didn't go through the normal process?
Well.
Okay, hold on, we have a limited amount of time.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just.
So, so, well, let's, let's move forward with the policies that we have to discuss right now, and if we can get back to this discussion, we'll get back to the discussion. Because I don't want to lose the time on the policies that we have before us. Is that, that's what we're going to do?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, can you all, you want to let us know, start the discussion with the policies that are before us, for us to consider for voting in the December nineteenth meeting?
Yes, so we have a few policies for us from V S B A. Some of these we have already voted on in May of two thousand eighteen, or September, and they largely are updates, statutory update, updates, grammatical errors that were corrected. The two that I want to point out to you are policy K K A, service animals in public schools, that is still being reviewed by the administration, so will not be on the December nineteenth agenda for adoption. They will bring back their recommendations to the policy committee at the next meeting, and then will be on next month's policy review. The other one that I want to highlight is policy J G D Z dash J G E Z on student suspension, expulsion. Mr. Cloud sent out a little bit of more background information earlier today, which you probably have seen, as you, as you saw, there are new statutory changes that really indicate the limit of time that a student can be long-term suspended or expelled. Also, at the time that we adopted it in September, you might recall that the Virginia Department of Education hadn't yet determined the definition for aggravating circumstances. So now that we have that information, the policies have been updated to reflect that. So I will now ask if there are any specific questions around that policy. You'll see, the red line for me didn't quite come up, but it's underlined and strike through in black, so if anyone.
It's purple. It looks kind of purple, the way it came.
It might look different for, for all of us. So if there are, I'd ask if anyone has any questions to share them.
Questions?
On that specific one, or any of them?
Well, on policy, right now, I'm asking about policy, the suspension expulsion policy.
Want to add anything else for the, okay.
There are no, okay. So then, at this time, and Mr. Cloud, I'll ask, is there anything you would like to add, or did I leave out anything that you think?
I'll, I'll just add, Mr. Jordan had brought up the question about. From a, a year or two ago, and I'm going to do that, and we'll, I'll bring that to the board separately. I, I should be able to email it next week. It, it's just a very minor change.
Okay, all right. Okay, great.
With this policy update, would our student handbook need to be, have some type of revision inserted into it, or something sent out to families to let them know that things have been changed?
Yeah.
I, I was, I was looking at Dr. Harold Lance, because I thought we incorporated.
Yes, we did.
The new language, because it had been approved and effective July one, so I think that's already incorporated in the handbook.
Great, right. Great, so, yeah, so those are, those are all the policies now. I think, Mr. Jordan, you had a question about another policy?
Yeah, on the, the quality profiles, when, when I was reviewing the, the quality profiles, and I was looking at the section, there's this, under section two, it deals with a series of bullets describing what we would review as part of the, the quality profiles. And so when I first looked at it, I went to the school board's accountability plan, because I knew that there were some measures and indicators there that, that we had looked at and said we wanted to monitor. And then I looked at the, our equity policy, because I know there was also some indicators there that we had looked at, which then led me to Ronoc's policy, equity policy, because we had adapted our equity policy from Ronoc's. When I looked at Ronoc's quality profile, and then started looking at some other divisions, there are several bullets that we have, for example, S O L test scores on literacy and numeracy tests, and several other bullets, that it appeared that other divisions kind of streamlined with alignment with the, the V S B A recommendation. So for example, there's a, I think in the V S B A version, there's a recommendation for looking at indicators by, by subgroups. For, it says, preparation programs, student groups, and so forth. I guess I say all that to say that I think we can streamline the, the bullets that we have, and maybe take out some of these specific references to S O L test scores. And then, as we've considered with our accountability plan, looking at such things as, more specifically around, let's say, workplace readiness skills performance, if there's no immediate need to, to adopt this, I'd like to know if I can get the boards okay to send you some considerations for how we could make sure that what we have here aligns with some of those indicators that we've talked about, and then see if they can get board support for that versus adopting it as, as is.
Okay, so you're specifically talking at?
Just in the, mostly in the area where it says the specific indicators include. So, right. So we may, so for example, it says attendance rate for students, and then I noticed in the Ronoc example, not only did they have attendance rate for students, they actually referenced the, the raw numbers. They had a, they had an indicator around students who had received, I guess, G Ds while they were in the, in the division. So I, I think there were some couple of other indicators that we may want to consider, and then some others that we can condense, so that we don't have it as elongated and specific as, as it currently reads.
Do you think that we, you can get us the information, and then we can review it, and still have it for consideration for adoption on the nineteenth, or do you think that the recommendations would be such that we would pull it completely from the?
I don't, I don't think they're that significant. I guess my, my request would be to be allowed to provide that, and I can get it to you by Friday.
Sure, but can, you're not trying to change the intent, you're just trying to streamline it?
Yeah, streamline it, and there are a couple of additional indicators for the board to consider, but it's nothing outside of what we've kind of already gone over.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? So, because there are additional indicators that I think would be helpful for us to look at and review, and potentially discuss, it might lead to us thinking, you know, we might want to, other indicators than what Mr. Jordan might be considering. So that would get, that.
I don't say, I was trying to avoid that, you know, I was just trying to.
Well, I'm just to the point, you know, that it could, it could, you know, presenting some set of indicators could go down that road, you know, where I'll say, it's just kind of a, I think, a slippery slope, if we try to cram it into December nineteenth, without knowing, without looking at what it is.
Jameson, and then Dr. Boone.
I was comparing the original. We have an awful lot of information that parents might be very interested in having, so I, I, is, this is not a legal, this is not based on a legal ruling or anything, is it, is this based, using the profile, is that a suggestion? I understand the legality ones we can't do, but I, when I looked, I was, it would just immediately jumped out at me that here we're giving our parents and everyone a lot of good information, and over here, we've eliminated, I mean, we're, a lot of the information that we had been giving them for all this time. Was there a reason for not sharing that information with parents again?
Well, that, those changes, I'm sorry, you go ahead. I was going to say, the changes that you see that are redlined here are V S B A changes. So they've been updated to reflect V S B A's updates, not.
They were changed because of changes to the standards of accreditation.
Right.
So, to the fact that we no longer talk about the professional qualifications of teachers, that was, has to do with the, you know, or the most recent two-year trend in student achievement in each subject area, and for grade level? That's, why are we not sharing that with parents?
Okay. Dr. Boone?
If, if I can piggyback on what Mr. Cloud was saying, when the state submitted its workbook for ESSA, as well as, as Mr. Cloud said, revised the standards for accrediting schools, this reflects what's required between those two. It does not limit a school board from including certain things, but these are the things that must be reported on per those workbooks. And I also want to, in this timeframe that we have, go back and check on a bullet that it didn't catch my attention earlier, but it references the modified standard diploma, and the state has phased that out for students with disabilities, and yet V S B A didn't, didn't change it here. So I need to look and see if a subsequent one has addressed that. We believe that all of our students who were eligible for modus, modified standard diploma have now gone through the system, and so we wouldn't even have that as an option anymore. So I think that's a piece that needs to be examined also.
One thing that I noticed was, or maybe I'm overseeing, but the qualification now, or the standard now for looking at dropout rates, I don't see that on here, I think that's something that should be disclosed as well. So we need to take this back and review it.
Yeah, I think so, because, I mean, all the information about comparisons between actual achievement levels of economically disadvantaged, racial subgroups, disabilities is still here, I don't see the rest of this, and, you know, we have all this information, why wouldn't we be sharing it with our parents? I, I, and, thank you. I, you know, I feel like we need to be very transparent, and I think that's one of the things that we hear over and over again from our parents and our, and the citizens, is that we're not transparent about what we're doing. This original one gave them a lot of good information. It would be hard, had they read this, all the information they were getting, I don't know why they would be concerned that we weren't being transparent, because this certainly seems very transparent to me. So I, and, and are we locked in, you know, the Virginia School Board Association, are we locked up with them on everything?
No.
Because here in Norfolk, there seems to be quite a, a movement for trans, more transparency. And I think this board tries to be transparent, certainly this document that we were going by before looks very transparent, and it just seems like we've, we've eliminated so many, so much of the information that we're sharing with our parents. You know, we need to be open with the data that we have, it's not a secret.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion. This is the appropriate time and place to have that feedback, so that we can send it back to the policy committee. Sounds like we need to do a little bit more work on this, because it seems like for Norfolk, we have a different level of expectations, set of expectations, so.
Yeah, I was going to say that any of the changes that were made were not to be less transparent intentionally, it was just to comply with what V S B A's recommendations were. And so, like, what we do with many of our policies, when we go above and beyond what the recommendations are, we add a Z to the end, so that it looks, sounds like that this is one of those that we need to have more discussion around, and bring it up to Norfolk standard.
And I, and I saw, I wasn't thinking that y'all were deliberately trying to not be transparent, I was thinking that in the process of maybe streamlining it, or aligning it with, with the, with the state school board, we were losing some of the transparency that we've made available to our parents. Not that there was any deliberate attempt here to limit the transparency, I just, but it, but it was being limited.
Yeah, and Dr. Boone reminded me also, this, I know that we're saying V S B A, but this is state, this is the state code, that we're trying to have the policies aligned with, at the minimum, to be in compliance, and then whatever we want to layer on top of that to personalize it towards Norfolk, that is what we do as a board.
So this comes from the state code?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, thank you, I didn't realize that, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So we'll go back and take our concerns about transparency to the state.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Basing.
And I, I want to clarify, so, my only comment earlier was that I agree, I think this is great, I, I do have some suggestions. I just would ask that we refer back to committee, that individual board members provide their input to the committee, and we'll go back and look at it, but I, I would ask that we not try to have it for adoption on December nineteenth, is all, is all I was.
That's, that's the feeling that I was getting from this discussion.
I think it's going to take, I think it would give us time to, to do that, and I want to be clear, we don't, Mr. Cloud, we don't, we're not obligated to adopt it December nineteenth, is that correct, under any legal reason? Okay, so, so I think we're good to do that.
Okay. So we're going to pull policy C M A from the consent agenda to have further board feedback sent to the policy committee, and bring it back for discussion at a later work session, once the policy committee has considered all of the recommendations that the board has sent to them. Now, I do have a question about the, the other policies that we've had the first and second hearing on, if I can move on to that. So our plan for the December nineteenth meeting is to have the second reading of the, I know we're calling it the tobacco policy, I don't remember the exact letters, and then the code of conduct on school property. We were going to move to adopt that, adopt both of those policies at the meeting. Are we still on board with that? Okay, all right. Anything else from the policy committee? Okay, thank you very much.
Something for the board, another item, a new, or an updated policy, there's a Baker Charlie, whatever G is, Green, school attorney policy. I looked at, the city of Virginia Beach has a memorandum or an agreement that, that they sign as part of their annual process, ties to the budget as well as to policy, that goes into specifics around the relationship between the school board and the city attorney's office, superintendent and city's attorney's office. I'd like to share that with the board for future consideration of us adopting something similar, so I just wanted to let you all know, I'd like to email that out to you.
Okay.
And then, at whatever appropriate time, the board would like to have the committee take a look at us doing something similar, would like to be able to do that.
Okay, and I'll just, quick update, so, you know, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Boone and the administration does have recommendations for the policy committee to look at, the dress code policy, as well as the homework policy, I mentioned it at the last meeting, and also the anti-bullying policy, which we talked about last time, and so we're going to be looking at that at the next policy committee meeting.
Okay, so then, let me come back to, did you?
I was going to add one, that I, based on the, the teacher that came in, and I was, when, I'm looking into what the best practices are for spouses of military, and military who are employed with N P S, and then are transferred, just to, to see what, what other district. districts might, may or may not be doing.
And if I can, again, just a reminder to the board that as you review what policies are around hiring, that we do have, there is a fiscal connection to having to make staffing adjustments based on enrollment. And so I just, again, a caution that I extended before, anything that would all of a sudden set aside certain employee groups to be guaranteed employment at a certain location, and if the data, the demographics or something change enrollment, then how do we adjust, address other folks getting bumped for a particular group? And what would be the, the end of particular groups that will want to be protected in that? So it's just ways in which, as you review that, that you give that some consideration. But we could find ourselves in a financial bottom that if we ever got to the point that we could not move teachers based on enrollment issues because of certain protected status, and then we have too many teachers at one place and not enough money to hire additional teachers for another school. So something to consider. It's around the financial piece, too.
Okay. And I think that's a great example of, you know, just as Mr. Jordan did, you know, doing the research, bringing it to the full board, and, you know, we can see, you know, what you find, and, and of course, with Dr. Boone's recommendations and input, I think we'll then refer back to the committee to continue the work on it.
Okay. Sounds good. Great, thank you. All right, now, let's go ahead and move on to our legislative priorities. Okay. Mr. Jordan, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. You had me today. Ms. Casabon's not feeling well, so you start with me.
We know that something's going around. Glad you're healthy. So the board will be ready to adopt our legislative priorities at the December 19th meeting. These will be the priorities that we declare as a school division, that we have asked our representatives, our elected officials, to advocate for on behalf of our students. These have been formed in, with great attention to detail, based on not only what's best for Norfolk, but also what has been shared with us through other educational advocates. So, Mr. Clinton and Ms. Martin, if you'd like to bring us up to speed with where we are with this, that'd be wonderful.
Actually, Madam Chair, we're gonna defer to our...
Me. Since, since the last draft was passed around, we've got comments back from one board member, and we've incorporated them in the latest draft, they're italicized, so you can easily follow them. We think it's ready to go. We've talked to a number of members of the General Assembly about, is potentially carrying items in this. Most of our package here is budget-related, and so we really can't draw the budget amendments until we see what's in the budget when the governor introduces it on December 17th.
Okay.
Yes. So, you know, in giving this a lot of thought, and I, you know, may be thinking about this too much, but, you know, under, under school safety, first of all, I appreciate you incorporating the comments that I have provided. And I think I mentioned this, I either mentioned it when we had our legislative meeting, and I know I mentioned it at V S B A when we had our Taiwan Regional Meeting. But where does, what is our role? I mean, I would like to see us make a strong statement against, not against, but for gun control. Because I think that that's, you know, what are you hearing about educators and divisions in their legislative priorities taking a strong stance on gun control as part of school safety? I mean, we have all these things and measures that are coming out because we don't have appropriate gun control, and...
The, as you all know, everyone knows that guns tend to be the third rail in politics these days. Most divisions have focused instead on items that direct, more directly affect students. One of the biggest discussions was at another division very recently, was about more money for school resource officers versus money for counselors. And the board members made it very clear, they thought there was more valuable investing money in counselors, because you, you look at school shootings, then that's where, you know, there's a lot of disturbed kids, and, and rather than school resource officers. So I think most of the divisions have been focusing on the things that can be, can be improved within the schools themselves, rather than on external, or like gun control. Now, having said that, a number of local governments have included that in the package. In the end, it's you all's package. If it's something you want to do, we will certainly advocate for it. There are bills gonna be in anyway, there's gonna be, there's a lot of them in, that will be going in this year, that deal with various issues of guns. I know the, there was a group in the House of Delegates that had a separate study, a little bit independent of the Speaker's study. The Speaker had indicated he didn't want guns to cloud the other issues, and I think if you look at the recommendations out of the Speaker's commission, it did kind of free him up to look at the, take a holistic look, look at the school safety issue. But there's another group that did convene on the Democratic side to look at some gun control stuff, and I think you will see some bills introduced that came out of that group in the session.
I think that the strongest statement that we can make is to partner and collaborate with our other boards within the region if they decide to take a stance on any legislation that comes through, and if we want to sign a letter, if a, if a bill comes through in support or against it as a board, at this point in time, I think that that would probably be our strongest way to get our voice heard. And then certainly, if there are bills coming through that are directly tied to the educational aspect of it, who can carry weapons in schools, et cetera, we need to know about that, and we need to be able to weigh in on that. And I know that probably Dr. Boone, you and the other regional superintendents probably are also on top of those issues as well.
One bill that I know that's gonna be introduced is from Loudoun Schools. They, like, us here have a separate school administration building that the board meets in, and it's fairly open, and they, currently, the law states has a prohibition on carrying weapons into school facilities, not school division facilities. So, so the prohibition would not apply to a building like this, there's no, no school, it's not a school. And so they wanna, and they've noted that they have a lot of, they have a fair number of hotly contested issues in front of their, their particular board, and people get pretty worked up about them, and even though they have a policeman there, they felt that they should have the same protections that the school does. So that's, there's gonna be bills, and as the chairman said, we're gonna flag those for you and bring them to your attention, and so you all can decide whether you want to weigh in on those, and if so, how, how, how much you want to weigh in on those.
Madam Chair, two items. Under school construction funding, the second sentence says, "This subcommittee has toured and assessed old schools still in use throughout the state, including Norfolk's Booker T. Washington and Maury High Schools." I'd like to recommend, rather than using the phraseology "old schools," that maybe we would use something...
They're old.
Something, well, they are old. They are old, but there's a, you know, one is, might be 35 years old, one might be 100 years old. So I, you know, the language around whether it's distressed, or something that we've been using with our FCI.
About aging.
Aging.
Yeah.
I mean, that, and then also, while we know that the committee has toured those two schools, we also know that we have a significant number of schools that have fallen in the range of our facilities condition index, and I think if we can highlight that as well to really show the circumstances that we are in, that that would be something we could do. So I just think if we could just pull it from, from our, from our report.
When, when Dr. Boone gave the opening statements for the subcommittee, I thought that it was spot on, because you, you described how many elementary schools we had over 50 years old, how many middle schools we had over, and I think that that would be...
For aging infrastructure, or something that we could use, rather than, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's my line, I'm not getting old.
I know. I recognize the Jordan language. So that was...
Add a few sentences to that.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, under, under support, where we have the standards of learning testing, the board supports the continued reform of the S O L testing regimen, including, we have that first bullet, is it not fair to say that this first bullet has been addressed by the work that the state board has done around the growth measures and the different model around accreditation? Or if not, maybe we should reference the, the new accreditation model and ask that they continue to...
Monitor it.
Monitor it, or hear back from the locality around, flexibility around changes based upon it?
Which, which bullet point are you on?
It says establishing a balance, first bullet under standards of learning testing.
Beach five, five.
Oh, I'm sorry. It just says, that first bullet says establishing a balanced assessment accountability system, and I, I think they have made progress in that area.
And, and I agree, I think they've made progress, but one of my concerns, along with other superintendents, is that the state celebrates what it has eliminated, but they are not doing anything of substance to support districts where we're dealing with unfunded mandates and, and stress on teacher times in terms of development of, and district development of the performance-based assessments, and all of that piece. So they, the language of what the state has done, yeah, it's been closer to a balanced assessment, but when you talk about lack of transparency, that's something that the state, V D O E and the state board have refused to really be truthful about, as it relates to what's happening with that social studies, and the fact that they are passing it down to districts. We have to create the, the performance assessments, and our folks are responsible for scoring that and all of that. And 100% of the cost for S O L tests are borne by the state, 0% of the cost of the performance-based assessments are borne by the state.
You mean the, borne by the locality?
No, zero. I was, both of them states. 100% of the S O L costs are borne by the state.
Okay.
0% of the cost of P V As are borne by this state.
Right, right.
And the operative, I think the operative term in there is establishing a balanced assessment accountability system as defined by local school boards rather than state.
My, my only point was, is if the, that the language not be open for interpretation. So if there's something specific, as Dr. Boone just described, let's be clear, that's what we want addressed, but not just put something in here that, from three years ago, was at one level, and then somebody can just say, oh, we've done that. If we have specific concerns around what Dr. Boone described, can we consider putting that language in there and not just have it be lofty language that somebody can just check a box and say, we've done that?
I'm fine with that.
Dr. Boone, can you, can I, catch you, we'll catch afterwards, work on it.
Thank you. When we round up this...
So, the second point that I had a question around is, and discomfort, because I personally, and some of the research that I've read, is exactly as you stated, you know, a lot of divisions don't want, it's not school resource officers, it's increased mental health. And I, I'm in that boat as well. I'm not convinced that school resource officers is our solution. So I'm particularly, I know the School Safety Task Force is recommending that piece, but, you know, I'm not convinced that that is...
What's the one that we have right now?
What?
The School Safety Task Force that we have right now?
Not in the, not in our division, the state, the state, yeah. So...
I'd suggest to you, if you go back to the School Safety Bullet on page, please, forward is, I mean, you talk about, you've got four bulleted items there, and certainly S R Os are one part of it, but if you, if you read it in terms of perhaps priority, you've got a lot of other things there, removing the support cap to, for counselors, psychologists, lowering the ratio for school counselors, wraparound mental health services. So S R Os could be one part of it, but they certainly, in this ranking, would not be anywhere near the top.
Right. I just, I guess that's, I just see provide funding for X Y, you know, the mental health services, but increasing funding for S R Os, which we know we, we have probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Boone, more of them than we do mental health counselors in our school divisions, probably not just here, but, you know...
Depends on how you define the mental health counselor.
Right, right. So that's, that's a piece. It's the increasing funding for that group of individuals versus the others which may have greater effect. But I'm not, you know, I'm just sharing, sharing my, my view on that.
And see, I have an opposite view, because extremely important that we have mental health working with the children. However, that's not helping us tomorrow morning if someone walks in the door with a gun. Like, and if you're in the school every day and you're seeing these things happen, the parents are very concerned, the teachers are very concerned. After the shooting in Connecticut, which the school was designed exactly like the Old Ocean View School, glass in the doors, they had a speaker system, just like they have there, but the speaker buzzer system doesn't work if you shoot the glass out and step through. And that's what that murderer, slaughter of children did, and he walked in, and the principal and her people are here, just like they are at the Old Ocean View School. They came out, he killed them, and then he took a left turn to the six-year-olds, just like it is at Ocean View School. I had teachers that did not want to come to work after that in first grade. The parents were jammed around my door the next day, it, because of what happened with the school that was designed exactly the same. That's why I pushed so hard for the double security entrance on the five new schools that would help eliminate that particular problem, but every solution to one problem just puts the eye on yet another problem. So if you're one of the people sitting in that school every day and you're reading about these things happening, you might have a different, you know, feel for it, but I would not want to even think about, I mean, I, on my request list that I gave you all last time, for, for what I consider budget priorities, you certainly saw security staffing, doesn't have to be, you know, a, a police officer, but some kind of security staffing in our elementary schools. I mean, these little kids need security. While we work on the mental issues and all of the other, the gun control issues and all of the other issues, we need to think about what's gonna happen in the morning.
Martin. Mr. Jordan, I think when we, this, this bullet here, increase funding for the School Resource Officer Grants Program. Now, I'm, my memory might not be clear on this, but wasn't this a funded program, then then went unfunded, and now the schools are asking for it?
It's funded, it's just, this is more money for it.
Okay.
And, go ahead.
So that's where that increase comes from, it's not necessarily saying to...
Right. There's a state program to fund them.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And I would suggest to you that, if you go back to the, to the major bullet there, it says, "Support full funding for the recommendations." The challenge is, there's, they should be funding all of them, not just cherry picking. And so I think that's the, and we're just sitting here illustrating some items that have been of priority to the board in that full funding, but the message here is to fund all of them.
And I think that in our conversations with them, when we go up to lobby, that we can certainly share with them, that we, we value our counselors and the support of counselors, and keeping our counselors as, are guidance counselors considered standard of quality, Dr. Boone? I think they are, they are.
Yes, they are funded at one per 400. That's why there's such a push by school districts for two things. One, to lift the cap on support staff so that we could have more, and two, to reduce the caseload of guidance counselors. Neither of which the General Assembly seems to have any appetite, you know, as we talked about at the legislative luncheon. They are helping us find solutions to our own challenges, such as removing the administrative responsibilities, that which you've already done, but that doesn't do anything to build the numbers that we need. And so they are unwilling to address those, those caps on those, those, those caseload numbers, because then, because there are certain numbers that are included in the standards of quality funding, S O Q funding, that means they would have to put more money into it.
It's hard to hire somebody with, by removing an administrative challenge.
Madam Chair, that kind of leads into the, the march that's happening on Saturday. There's a statewide effort that's going around, and that's what I shared with you all at your desk area, the More Better Stronger campaign that's being led by Mayor, Mayor LeVar Stony out of Richmond, Richmond Public Schools. I know that there was a press conference, I think... Um, I know that there was a press conference, I think that took place.
They had a press conference, uh, last week. Uh, it was attended by some of the local school divisions. And I'm glad you brought up, Mr. Clinton, because it was kind of on my agenda to bring up to you guys about that march. I'm glad you've already covered it.
Well, I'm, actually, this is the first time I'm bringing it here to the board because we, we just got it here. And I know that lots of things are moving. Um, and then also if you have any recommendations on how we might be able to support those efforts. Um, uh, and just to kind of give some more clarity around it for the board.
The only thing I have at this point is, uh, the information, I think, sent to Ms. Birdsong, to Dr. Birdsong about, about it, that, um, I'd gotten an inquiry from the Richmond folks. I'd assume, I guess, probably shouldn't have, uh, that they would have reached out to board members and Dr. Boone already on their own. But, um, it is Saturday. It's a march from Martin Luther King Middle School in Richmond across the Martin Luther King Bridge to the Capitol. Uh, they're trying to round up as many supportive school, people from supportive school divisions. They're going to have a bunch of students and the, uh, it's to highlight the need for vastly increased funding for public education, particularly with particular emphasis on the urban schools.
And if, um.
And I'll get more details and send them to, uh, Dr. Birdsong to, uh, first thing in the morning.
Doesn't that, that, uh, address the, the whole thing about equity and the funding? And that every district is funded per child the same amount with no consideration for, for school districts that have such high poverty populations? Wasn't that one of the things?
That's one of the issues, yes.
Right. That, that would help us a lot right there because we need a lot more support for our children than they need in, like, Northern Virginia. Okay, thank you.
Um, so yeah, the, the constitutional obligation that the state has, and then of course, the failing funding piece that, um, Dr. Boone was talking about, um, during the recession when they capped, um, what we could spend. So, um, we have this here. I'm quite sure there'll be some additional information that we'll bring back. Um, I'm not quite sure from our board and, and I'll, and I'll ask, and I didn't get a chance to ask this, Dr. Boone. I didn't find out until a little bit later. Um, have we been contacted? Because I know that as a board personally.
For this one on Saturday?
Yes.
I'm not aware of this one on Saturday. I'm aware of some other things.
There's a, there's a.
That are going forward, uh, later in the month and, uh, in January, but I haven't heard anything about this.
I, I have to check. Um, I received an email. It was either, uh, earlier today or maybe late yesterday. And I'll go back and look at that. It was from one of the, it was either a board member or council member from Richmond Public Schools. So I'll send that, I'll send that out. But it was in, it was very recently.
So that's kind of how the press conference came together too.
So do you know if they're asking, um, petition or anything, signing a letter?
There's an online petition. Right. There is an online petition asking, that they're asking people to sign. And, um, there, and on, they have a website for, it's, there's a page, web page on Richmond Public Schools page, on site. And, uh, um, they have an online petition linked for it as well as details on, on the, on march. And, and you can, and how to register to participate in the march.
So I, um, it's the more, it's morebetterstronger.com. Um, that's the site. Um, I'd like run between now and potentially our next, um, board meeting, just to find a little bit more information. And if there is a particular action that we as a board, maybe a resolution.
It's Saturday.
I know they're having the march on Saturday, but I'm just saying as far as coming back as a board action to collectively say that we join the campaign with other school boards across the state. Um, and I will come back.
I want to go back to the guidance counselor piece one last time. Is it worth it for us to, uh, spell out language that Dr. Boone alluded to of, about rebalancing the caseloads for our guidance counselors?
What you could do, um, I think the, the emphasis on guidance counselors is probably a good idea. Because if there's going to be a break in the support cap, that's probably where it's going to come. What we may want to do is just have a separate, um, item on guidance counselors. Always break it out from the school safety stuff and, um, suggest that support cap be lifted on guidance counselors and use the, because it's, it's more than just school safety stuff. It's just the, the caseload stuff. And have something separately on that. That would work.
I think, I think we should do that.
Okay.
I don't know. How does the board feel about that? So we have just a few, uh, minor, uh, changes. Uh, we can make those changes, send it back out to us. And I still would like for us to move to vote on December the 19th. Um, so we can get that information, um.
We'll turn that around pretty quickly.
Great. Okay. And if there's any feedback that you all think of between now and then, please share that with, uh, Ms. Martin, Mr. Clinton, Mr. Jordan, um, Dr. Birdsong, uh, Dr. Boone. And make sure that we can get that information out so we're all aware. So we can have a nice, clean version on the 19th for voting on. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda is our CTE update. Dr. Boone.
Thank you. As Ms. Goshen comes forward, um, through agenda planning discussions with, uh, Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clinton, they asked that we provide an overview of what's going on within our CTE programming within Norfolk Public Schools currently, including enhancements and, and aspects of the work that has been underway for quite some time. And so tonight, tonight, Ms. Go, well, this afternoon, Ms. Goshen and I, Ms. Goshen will be presenting. I'll be supporting that presentation and then we'll, uh, look forward in discussion that the board may have. Ms. Goshen?
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, and all great school board members. Thank you for allowing me to provide a overview of career and technical education within our school division. Often we talk about the CTE high school, but there's so much more to what we do pre-K through 12 in Norfolk Public Schools around career and technical education. And when we speak of career and technical education, we're speaking to the whole child and not just a select few, because CTE is for every child. Every child in the state of Virginia will take a CTE course or be, uh, some way involved in CTE programming prior to graduation. And so that's pre-K through 12. So when we look at CTE, it's within the core content, just as much as the core content being within where we are. As we look at the various components that make up career and technical education, you have rigorous and relevant theory work. And that's where you receive your curriculum framework from the Virginia Department of Education as well as various different entities within the business community, industry, whether it's on a local, state or national level. We also have with all of our courses assigned to it, affiliated national career and technical student organizations, which frame around leadership and extracurricular work that goes hand in hand for students at the middle and high school levels. As part of those career and technical orders, organizations, our students participate in district-wide, statewide, regional, as well as national competitions where we go up and we compete against various other school divisions within our state and beyond based on what students have learned and the ability to perform, um, as it relates to their particular areas. For example, our nurses always go and they compete statewide against other nurses in terms of, um, I would say, uh, leadership, skills, performance, things of that nature. We have, uh, technology students who travel and perform, and that's elementary, middle, and high school. And to brag a little bit, we do quite well when we go out because our students and our teachers have worked very hard. You may hear about future busi- business leaders of, of America. You may hear about technology students associations and things of that nature. And that's what we're referencing when we say the competitions. They're not just competing, they're learning how to take what it is that they've learned in core content, CTE technical, put it with that relevant work-based learning and go out and produce as they get ready for the world. Other things we have as components of CTE will be work-based learning. There are seven slash eight approved work-based learning methods that the state allows us to participate in for our students. And you'll see that as a slide as we move forward. All of those things that we do in collaboration with credentialing are put together. And that's when you hear college, career, and citizen or civic, civicness ready for students. That's what CTE is about. It takes all that a student has learned in core content and it makes it relevant. It synthesizes everything and brings it to life. So what we've done in algebra, now it all makes sense because now it's connecting to my lifelong learning and the careers that are beyond. For us in particular, oh, I have some background music now. For a career and technical education overview, we offer CTE across all of our middle schools, K eights, high school, technical center, and auxiliary settings. And when we say auxiliary settings, we're talking about the ISAP program, the Granby Evening School, Madison's programs, as well as open campus. So all students have an opportunity to participate in various forms, whether it's through programming in terms of activities or actual credit-bearing courses, or at our middle school level, non-credit-bearing courses, and as well as high school credit-bearing courses. All of the work that we do is aligned with the national, uh, career clusters model, which you would hear all of the divisions do. And that's when the, uh, federal government has taken all of the, I would say, skills, knowledges, and abilities related to CTE or workforce development and put it into clusters. Aligned with those clusters are 79 different pathways. For example, if one clusters health and medical sciences, a pathway would be therapeutic. Therapeutic or diagnostic has to deal with, uh, positions related to being a physician, a nursing assistant, or something of that nature. Another pathway under a cluster could be, um, information technology support, where it may still be aligned with health and medical sciences, but it's not in the physician's realm. They're with the IT informatics that's related to that. So that's how all, all of our courses are, uh, arranged. And it's very close with, with everybody else in the state is doing as well as nationally. When we also look at several things that align with us are components for graduation. And we are not just a school division that chase, uh, graduation requirements. When we build out a program, we're looking for what's best for our children so that they can move forward and be very successful once they leave Norfolk Public Schools. It just so happened, the last five years, every time there's a new graduation requirement, it happens to sit within CTE. When you look at it, we talked about credentials, uh, two years ago. All students receiving a standard diploma must have a, uh, industry credential in order to graduate. Now, when you look at, uh, maybe four plus years ago, maybe even more, probably five, economics and personal finance. Every student, regardless of diploma type, has to take the economics and personal finance class. Some of the new things that are coming down the pipeline that may not be connected to graduation per se, but it is accreditation, is the college, career, and citizenship readiness that you will hear about that goes into effect and was it 2021, 2022? Where you're looking at work-based learning, students who complete, uh, CTE coursework, students who are enrolled in some form of industry credential, students who earn different, uh, dual enrollment, uh, efforts within CTE and beyond. And so that's something that we are part of. And to ensure that we are ready, we started doing a lot of that work several years ago because we hate for a mandate to come and we want to catch up. We'd like to make sure we are ahead in order for our children, our teachers, and our schools to be better prepared. Also within CTE, every school division in the state receives ratings. And we also receive benchmarks, just like you would do with SOLs. What takes place with that is the federal government allows the State Department of Education to negotiate what will be the benchmarks for all school divisions for career and technical education. For 2016, 17, we met all benchmarks and it's still pending for 2017, 18, because it's always a year behind. So for 20, uh, in January 2019, we will get our rating for 2017, 18, and then the following year. And it continues as that. It takes a look at how successful we are with our students who are graduating, whether or not our special population students are meeting any type of benchmarks, whether or not we're testing our students, whether or not we are providing certain things. How are our CTE students doing on SOLs? And I'm happy to say, whether it's in this, um, state or beyond, research shows when students are engaged in career and technical education in some formal way, whether it's through a concentration specialty or not, they're graduating from high school at a higher rate than students who are not. And some research will say it's about 90%, whereas the normal graduation rate across the country may be 80%. And they even found that research shows that when they're connected to CTE in high school, they're going on to college at a higher rate and they are completing at a higher rate. One thing that I have before you is to give you an idea of CTE enrollment and offerings. That is, the number of students that are enrolled each year in CTE courses. That could be health and medical science. You hear a lot about the Granby's Girls in Engineering. That's career and technical education. ROTC falls under career and technical education, uh, information technology business. And so when you look and see how many students we have enrolled, last year for 2017, 18, we had enrollment of 11,611. Just so happened, we looked at our numbers for this year and we're sitting right there. And what that is, is sometimes a student may take two courses. For example, a student in IB may take, um, economics and personal finance. And he or she may also participate in North Star. Our 11,623 includes all students. So we have gifted education, students with disability, that may make up 15 to 20%. We really try to mirror the number of students who are within our students with disability categories are the same number of students in CTE. Same thing for gifted. Sometimes we have upwards of over 1,000 students, uh, 1,000 student enrollment in gifted education in terms of CTE. That can be North Star. That can be their regular education programs at their schools. It can be at the Norfolk Technical Center. So they take them in all different forms. If you look at the 11,000, we've worked really hard to make sure our females, as well as our males, take it. So it's about a, I would say, close to 50/50, not quite. Because you may have 5,500 females, 6,000 some other males. However, the females are taking the non-traditional higher-level STEM courses. They're not just in culinary. Just in case you didn't know, for a male to be in culinary, that is considered to be non, uh, excuse, uh, female to be in culinary, that's considered to be a non-traditional. We didn't know that till several years ago. So we get a whole lot of credit for our non-traditionals because we have a lot of females who enjoy that as well as males. The number of females who are going into higher-level, uh, STEM classes is increasing and they are staying and they're being very successful. To go back with Granby's Girls in Engineering, that's how it started. We wanted to open the doors to higher-level STEM for young ladies without excluding males. So there are young men in there, but it's just so, our, our young ladies are doing a great job. And I don't want to say kicking butt on TV, but I just think I did. Okay. Hope nobody's watching that. That, that will offend. But in looking at the numbers, 11,600, we have middle school students that account for about 25 to 30%, depending on the year and time of year. For our high schools, 70 to 75%, depending on the time of year. The reason why I say the time of year, high school programming is year-long. Middle school students right now are on the 18-wheel cycle. So 18 weeks, they take it from September to January. Then middle school switches over from the end of January to June, they take another CTE course. In looking at the, uh, industry credentials, all of our credit-bearing classes to date, we have worked to have some form of industry credentials assigned. Not because it's a, it's a graduation requirement, because we're not chasing the requirements, but because it is the best thing for children. Children, whether they move forward and they go on to college, an industry credential can mean the world of a difference. Whether they go on to the military, ASVAB is a credential. If they go on to the world of work and they're going into some sort of business, whether it's healthcare or any, they have a credential. Or they decide they want to open their own business. So each of our students, we really work hard to have them connected to a credential. Right now, we would say most of our students are guaranteed to take credentialing in economics and personal finance. They all take Ys. Although it's only for a graduation requirement for the standard diploma, we want to make sure we have a Plan B. So our advanced, uh, students take it, as well as our standard diploma students, students with disability. Right now, we sit at, uh, earned, last year, we had 3,409. And I can't wait to see how many we have earned next year. Right now, at the state level, there are 350 different types of credentials that have been approved. We don't. We don't offer three hundred and fifty, there is no way possible. What we do is bring in our community advisors, whether it's the CTE Advisory Council or sub councils for each of the sixteen cluster areas, and they go through our curriculum, and they take a look at what's most important for our students to have going into the industry. For example, Virginia Ship Repair Association, they will come in and take a look at all of the different types of trades and industrial things that we have, make sure that our curriculum matches what is needed in the industry, and then advise us on what is the best credential for them. So we may think it's A, but they may come in and bring forward something else. Same thing with engineering, whether O'Dominion comes in to speak with us, or someone from the IT field comes in to speak. And so that's how our selection is made through the three hundred and fifty that's available. We match it up with what is most marketable and most important to students as they move forward in life. Another important component that we share, and I'm proud to share, is work-based learning. We are working extremely hard for this, not because it will become part of accreditation, because we started doing a tremendous amount of work on ensuring our students are exposed to relevant work experiences. And so last year, we had three hundred and twenty-five students participate in work-based learning. These are the ones that are approved by the state because of our students being minors. Even if they're eighteen, they are still in high school, so they follow the regulations by OSHA, standards that are assigned to Fair Standards Labor Act for children. And so you have service learning, which is different from community service. We have job shadowing. In February is National Job Shadowing Day. Our students will be assigned to school personnel within the building, outside in the community and industry, to shadow someone in which they are interested in going. And for example, Mr. Zamora, we have several programming classes. We have a network engineer in each and every building, and he has agreed briefly, until we can sit down and flush it out, that maybe they can job shadow one of the network engineers that are there. We have a carpentry program, having students to shadow a carpentry person. We have a nursing program, having them to shadow our nurses. If we don't have someone within our school division, then we will move outside. The city of Norfolk has been very nice about opening up a lot of their departments to allow our students to shadow, but Centerra has been very helpful, the Newport New Ship Building. It has been a wonder of who is willing to come forward and help us, and Greater Norfolk Corporation is very instrumental in connecting us with different individuals. You have paid and unpaid internships, you have mentorship, clinical experiences that are reserved for the health and medical fields only, cooperative education, and registered youth apprenticeship. And I'm very happy to say that we were one of the first divisions, if not the first in Tyewater, to have an official registered youth apprentice. Normally, that's only reserved for adults. The Virginia Department of Labor partnered with us and several other school divisions to allow us to pilot registered youth apprenticeship. That is very different than the traditional apprenticeships that you hear used loosely. A registered apprentice is governed by the Department of Labor. And that particular student for us was an HVAC. That individual started out doing an internship at a business, and he impressed the owner so well, he wanted to hire him. But that young man was still in high school. And so what we did was worked with the Department of Labor, and he was hired while he was still in high school as a student who could work for that company. A couple of weeks ago, we had a teacher who came to work one day, and he said, "I think I know this young man." And he showed Mr. Bell a picture. And it turned out, it was our former high school student who reported to repair his heating system that had just went out. So not only is that student now graduated from high school, working and making a pretty decent salary, he has now moved into adult apprenticeship, which means he's going to make a pretty good salary and continue to go to school. And if he decides to move on, he can move up with all the things that he learned in school going towards his license. So apprenticeship has a very good footing, and it is gaining ground throughout the state. The next thing just gives you an overview of how we're supported. At the federal level, we receive Perkins funding, and that right now is grade seven through twelve. But with the reauthorization of Perkins, we will be able to expand and use Perkins funds in a different format. We have state-level funding, mostly that's through grants, but it's also through lottery funds. Lottery funds pays for several different things in terms of equipment for CTE. Local funding comes through our normal budget process. We have things where we have partnerships where money is donated to us, equipment is donated to us, or human resources. And then we have our CTE Advisory Council, who always comes forward and supports us one hundred percent. And I can say, we have an awesome council. They change over time because some folks move and they get promoted, but there's never a time where we have not been supported by them. And moving on, so I can wrap this up before there's questions and a couple more slides, I just wanted to let you know that while we talked about things that we're currently doing, we are on the move and expanding. If we talk about computer science for all, as we know, those SOLs have been placed upon us for pre-K through twelve, we are making great strides. We have moved into CTE dual enrollment. Currently, we have forty-eight CTE students or students within a CTE course that is aligned with Tyewater Community Colleges, Computer Information Systems. We are expanding that to include next year, mechatronics, culinary, and early childhood education. So we will be able to grow our dual enrollment numbers as it relates to CTE at all of the schools at a greater rate, including Norfolk Technical Center. We started out this year and kicked off cybersecurity, and we're very excited because that's been a labor of love for over four, over about four or five months, leading into the summer, through the summer, and now. But we have a great amount of students who are taking those courses, and so we moved beyond coding. Now we're into cybersecurity. AP Computer Science Principles have been started today, and yes, we have AP classes related to CTE. This is done in collaboration for math. Although the standards for AP Computer Science Principles have been worked on with College Board, they sit in CTE, but it is a math course. And so we get to do it in collaboration with Dr. Cottado's team, and most appreciatively of Mrs. White, who has worked with us to get it moved forward. And this is our first year with it. Although it's a math course, it is taught by our CTE teachers. So you will hear more about that. Middle School Code VA, all of our middle school teachers for CTE have been trained in Code VA, and that is being infused with the seventh and eighth-grade students. We are moving forward with applications for governors' status for various different programs. We are recertifying for a lot of our national accreditation standards, expanding work-based learning, expanding our STEM options for all students, and then our CTE high school planning. Just to give a quick overview of the CTE high school, we've all talked about it for several different years, some are new, and some we're doing a refresher, but it is a concept where we have a full-time comprehensive CTE school that is a collaboration between Norfolk Public Schools, the city of Norfolk, higher education, two-year and four-year institutions, Hampton Roads Industries and businesses. And how it came about with a full-time comprehensive CTE school has been several years of labor of love, where there's been extensive research, whether it's through Harvard, whether it's through the University of Arizona, Federal Bureau of Statistics, you name it, Opportunity Inc., we all have come together to do extensive research and visiting sites. For example, looking at, not just resting on one particular model, P-Tech in Norfolk, in New York, excuse me, we had an opportunity to visit with them as we looked at how IBM came into their school division and collaborated with their charter schools and public, regular public schools to bring forth career and technical learning for their students. We visited Georgia, whether it was with the Career Academy or Gwinnett County, and the work that they're doing. We've looked at the Nashville model, that may be close to home, Hampton's trying some of that, Virginia Beach has done some. We've been to Massachusetts, where we did Worcester Model, that's one of the top high schools in the country. We've been to Delaware to look at Delaware Polytech, you name it, we've been there. If I haven't been there personally, someone on our team of about, I think, over the years, we have about seventy-five different champions at the table who have visited different school divisions, different State Departments of Education, different agencies to find out what's the best model. And our model kind of takes a little bit of everyone. It's not just settling on one. It has been years of research that have brought us to this point. In terms of the curriculum, we look at high academics integrated with high demand and high-quality CTE. That means continuing with the dual enrollment, advanced placement, high industries. That particular curriculum has come together because education, K-12, higher ed came together, and the industry has come together to look at what would be the best curriculum based on student needs, trends of the future, and workforce demand. Enrollment, fourteen to sixteen hundred, that sways different years. Sometimes you'll hear twelve hundred, sometimes you hear eighteen hundred, but that's fourteen to sixteen hundred, grades nine through twelve. And in the evening, you're looking at about six hundred adults that come in when the high school students leave. There are some programs that overlap. Co-curriculum-wise, it's same as everywhere else. There is no, you can't have a football, you can't have, we really work to include comprehensively what a student would get at a traditional high school, as well as a career academy, as well as the industry, and bring it all together to make it the best option we could for children. And last but not least, I know I'm going quickly, however, it is the academy structures. The academy structures are broken into four, all under one wonderful roof. You have the Governors Health and Medical Sciences Academy, which is something that you must apply for, and that includes all of your medical sciences, and related, health informatics as well. Business and Information Technology Academy, that is one where you're looking at all of your IT higher level, cybersecurity beyond, coding and beyond, informatics, logistics. Regional Maritime Trades Academy, that is heavily a lot of your trades and industrial, but on a higher level. For example, ship repair design and building has taken a twist. Before it was traditional, now ship repair is moving into the realm of three-D ship building. That's what we're talking about. So yes, there's pipe fitting and there's welding, but we're also talking about taking it to a much higher level. The next is the Governor's STEAM Academy or STEM Academy. Reason why we have two, STEM has morphed into a lot of different things. You will hear ESTEM, you will hear STEAM, you will hear STREAM, you will hear STEMH, and that's for STEM with Health and Medical Sciences. Right now, we looked at STEAM, however, it encompasses a lot. Although all of these seem like they're in isolation, there is no such thing. If you are in a regional maritime trades academy, there is no way that you would not interface with information technology. Same thing with Health and Medical Sciences. Health and Medical Sciences, every simulation, everything you do has to do with STEAM or information technology. These particular academy structures came about from research. We had, and I believe it was Opportunity Inc., who has now changed their name to Career Works, they were our consultants in doing a local, regional, and state workforce development study on what are the top industries in our region and nationwide that really require our students to have higher-level learning so that we can meet the needs of the children, but also the workforce. And because of the work that was done with them, and the numerous charrettes that were held with higher ed, industry coming together, these are the four academies that they decided on. However, because of sake of time, we didn't go into the long list of what goes underneath each one, but I'd be more than happy to do that at another time. And with that said, I was told to do an overview, so I can talk forever, so I'd like to keep it at an overview, because when you speak about doing great things for kids who deserve the best, it's easy to go on and on. But I'd like to open this opportunity for Dr. Boone to add whatever I may have missed, and whatever questions that you may have for me or anyone else. But this isn't being done in isolation. There's a lot of champions at the table who have been there for the past six, seven, eight, nine years, who are really working behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, and aligned with us to get the work of CTE, not just a CTE high school, but career and technical education within Norfolk Public Schools, moving forward in the right direction for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Gosian. The only thing I wanted to add, her last statement, I hope, isn't lost on anyone, because that's the nature of how we're doing this. It's not CTE as a standalone, but it's CTE in terms of how do we advance career and workforce development for all students, regardless of their pathways after high school. And I think it's critically important, too, as we think about the profile of a Virginia graduate, again, we aren't in a deficit model in terms of having to go forward and figure out how we connect, but rather, we are able to show where we've been making the necessary adjustments and enhancements to our various programs to, one, keep them interesting and competitive for the students, and, two, to make sure they are attractive for students. You know, there is that generation of people in this country where vocational education, career and technical education was a negative. The students that are coming through now understand the connections between what they learn and the relevance for the workforce. And so they're very excited about what's going on. While Perkins, I would do my one fiscal and financial commercial, while Perkins is giving us some flexibility, doesn't necessarily mean they're giving us new money. And so when we talk about doing some other things and some expansion, there's not new money. We're hoping that the state will continue to push forward, but if earlier in the presentation, Ms. Gosian indicated that it's lottery money, that's funding a lot of the CTE work. Once again, the state is supplanting its obligations through general fund dollars by using lottery funds instead. And so lotteries come and lotteries go, depends on how much people play. And so that, to me, is not a stable funding source. And so state has got to do a much better job in terms of permanent funding that's very reliable.
Questions from board members.
Within the CTE high school structure, how is career placement after high school supported?
All of our students will be afforded the opportunity, whether it's at the CTE high school or not, we work strongly to make sure there are post-secondary transitions in place. And sometimes that comes in various different ways. That can be referred out to an agency where Opportunity Inc. comes in with youth bills and helps us to place students in various different places. Our school counseling department is just amazing with working with students who want to go to college, who want to go into the military, who would like to go into a different area of work. And so placement is where it starts in middle school, if that makes any sense. We start talking with students in elementary, middle school, and high school, just to determine where they'd like to go. And so if a student gets to high school, and if college is not his or her pathway, then we start working with our industries very early to get them into those job shadowing opportunities, those internship opportunities, now registered apprenticeship, so when they graduate, they go right into the world of work. If they decide, "I want to go on to college," then we have two-year and four-year universities that we start working with very early, connecting our students with that. If they decide the military, then on our advisory or military representatives, where whether they're in ROTC or not, they have the opportunity to take the ASVAB, and which allows them to translate into some work with military folks. Also, when you look at work-based learning, that's the beginning of any placement, because when they walk in the door, just like in college, you started out with one major, and then a year later, there's another one, and a couple years later. Well, high school's about the same. They come in ninth grade, and they know exactly what they want to do, and then by the end of that semester, they've changed it, and then by next year. So having these different work-based learning experiences where they say, "I want to be a surgeon or a physician," and they go to job shadowing, they go, "Ooh, I don't like needles, I don't like blood, I don't like this." Then you get to move them to something they may like. The great thing is, as you're doing work-based learning, that theory connection of what's happening is connected. So then they get to see the connection, they'll say, "I don't like math, that's why I'm going into carpentry." Well, if you're going to build my house, I sure hope you know how to measure, I sure hope you know how to do. hope you know how to do this. Our cosmetologist will say all the time, I don't like science. And I'd say, let me let you in on a secret. Chemistry, right now, you just colored someone's hair or put in a perm, that's chemistry. And math with health sciences, all the time, I'm not a science person. Well, when I go to pick up my prescription, I sure hope you know how to convert those dosages, so you give me the right stuff. So placement begins long before they get to that point of graduation, but if we get there at the twelfth grade and there's not a child who doesn't have a clear map, then there is a career coach who works with them to make sure when they leave, they are connected to something. And it's just not our students who are in the traditional nine, twelve. Our ISAP students who are there for GED, it's very important that we connect them to something. So the moment they decide to get the GED, we are working on where you're going, what you're going to do, and you will not take that GED unless we've connected you to something. Many of them, after they take the GED, they realize, I got this. They go on to TCC, some go on to the military. So we want to make sure regardless of what your post-secondary choice is, we have the options and opportunities there for you, and we've prepared you for a variety of things versus saying, you go there, you go there, you go there. This generation, the world, is at their, their feet, and we have to prepare them better for it.
And, and there's a need. I mean, everywhere you turn around, they are telling us that the, the construction workers, the welders, the ship repairer, they are aging out and they have no one to replace them. So then they are coming to us, and they've almost skipped the community colleges, and they're coming to the high schools and they're saying, what are you doing to have these students ready for work and career, because we will help you along the way? And I, I know that's what's going on in those advisory meetings.
And a lot of times, they, that's where the apprenticeship program has come in, because it's allowed the students to move into that area and specialize in it. Many of our jobs of today do not require the four-year, it may be two-year or something, or it may be an industry credential. We have some students who are coming out of the IT field and going right into well-paying jobs, because they've received the credentials while in high school, and at that point, that's worth more than some other things. The great thing about it, once they get the credential and go to work, a lot of the time, the employer is now paying for them to go back to college, if so, choose. If not, they're going on through apprenticeship. So there's so many more options that we may not have had when we were in school, there's so many things they can do. But while we do that, we don't forget about the high academics. So we don't rush someone into apprenticeship, because to get into the apprenticeship school, you need to go up through and beyond algebra, too. So we make sure kids understand, while you're doing the CTE, those high academics or stronger sense of academics go in hand, because we're looking for the intellectually skilled student for work, as well as the hands-on skilled student.
Ms. Martin?
I think you-
Oh, yeah, to my colleagues and I'll-
All right. So I have, I have several questions. So, early, early on, can you, in the presentation, if you can go up to, I think it's the second slide, yeah, right there, do you have a sense, so, are we also monitoring the number of CTE credentials or exams that are attempted versus when they actually become credentialed?
Yes. When we get our report, it shows us the number taken versus the number approved. And normally, within the state, you have a seventy-five percent rate that you have in terms of passing, and we've stayed right in line. Sometimes we exceed that because our seniors take them, but now what we're doing is, we are not waiting for senior and junior year, we're moving into sophomores and sometimes freshmen, and sometimes they have to take it ma- more than once in order to get it versus a junior who has been in CTE classes a little bit longer. We're also expanding them, that it's not just upper-level students taking that, our students with disabilities take it, our ELL students, right now, we have about three-hundred-and-twenty-five student enrollment, that means that they may be taking more than one. ELL students who will also take CTE courses and take the accreditation. We have some students, our ELL students, who are enrolled in, sometimes the programs at the technical center, and they blow away everyone else. Why? Because they are used to some different hands-on things that maybe our first-year students have not gotten. We have some students who have come over from Norview to do the automotive, and we just happen to have a, a teacher who speaks more than one language, and that student is doing amazingly well, because they converse with the teacher, and there is no language barrier. So we have to figure out how to get the skill sets and the academic abilities moving forward for our students, because that potential is in there, we, we're just working to get it out.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was my next question, is, you know, I'd love to see in the future, this information by the subgroups that you described.
By subgroups?
Yeah. And just to see who's accessing them and who's completing. And also, you know, you described earlier the academic benefits of participating in CTE courses, and how being able to tie that and see that, you know, how many students are receiving standard diploma, how many are getting an advanced diploma. I think that would be good information in the future for the board to potentially look at.
For this particular graduating class of the CTE completers, just for this group, we had about five-hundred-and-eighty-nine who received, and that's roughly a standard diploma, and over three-hundred-and-seventy who received advanced studies. We have a large number of students, I would say about seven-hundred, who received a CTE seal, which is high and above, as well as about one-hundred-and-four who received the advanced math and technology seal on their diploma. So they're doing some great work. We've had four students who were in CTE last year or the year before, who also went on and received the IB diploma. Forty-eight dual enrollment students, which means that's going to weigh heavily for them. So you name it, we're really working hard to, to fill the void of the entire gamut and not just one particular group of students.
Well, you did, you answered my last question, which was the number of CTE completers.
Ms. Martin?
Hi, Ms. Goshen. You talked a lot about how our CTE curriculum, curricula are designed to, to meet the needs of the industry, and it just reminded me of a conversation I had with a colleague in a different district today about a study that, that concluded that by twenty-twenty-one, the nation will face a hundred-thousand doll, a hundred-thousand-person deficit in the teaching profession. So can you please share how your, how our programs are preparing future teachers?
We're doing it, doing it in two separate ways. Currently, we have early childhood education, that stays with pre-K. That's more pre-K three, pre-K four, early childhood. And EAN is working with us how to move that forward. Also, on a higher level, and this is, it's funny you ask, because Mr. Sheets and I from Human Resources just spoke about this, working with Virginia Wesley, that we had a conversation about a year ago, but now recently, it has returned, bringing back the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow's program. And that will take it from early childhood education on up to individuals who want to go beyond. In order to bring that back, we are working and looking at how to reapply to the state so we can re-implement that in September of twenty-nineteen. So the good thing about it, the schools, association, the unions are on board and wanting to help us, and then Human Resources, who is just a blessing in of itself, wanted to look at how can we work with children who are interested in education, possibly going through the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow's program, going, connecting with higher ed, getting those individuals in, and working with them so they can come back and be teachers within Norfolk Public Schools. And so that is something we are applying for, Human Resources for the upper levels, EAN for the lower levels. So stay tuned, we'll give you a little bit more information, but thank you for that question, because we are definitely working on it.
Thank you.
Great. Are we doing anything with FEA, I mean, FEA, Future Educators of America? Do we still have those?
Yes, we still have all organizations with the exception of what used to be called FFA, Future Farmers of America. It's very hard to sell that one in the, in the urban divisions. And so, but we're working on that, because instead of doing Future Farmers, which they have now changed the name, we're looking at the biotechnology that goes along with the agriculture. So we're going to get them in there some kind of way, but in the urban setting, you have to work to sell that one. But all of our student organizations are alive and well and active. Each school has an advisor for each of them, and we're bringing that forward. Each school also has a work-based learning advisor. So we have someone working on the student organizations, and you have someone working on work-based learning.
And that said, each, each level, I'm sorry, I've got a question on that.
Middle and high, you don't have student organizations at the elementary, but elementary, you do more of a, a career awareness, so those are your career affairs and things of that. But however, CTE is moving down into earl, early childhood education and elementary, so that's a plus.
I, I'm a product of CTE here in Norfolk Public Schools, I'm very proud of it and know the wonders that it, it can do. Matter of fact, if I'm still, still holding here, I'm still the only state president for the Virginia Technology Student Association from Norfolk, from here. So I'm very interested in, in the power of these co-curricular student organizations, even what we're doing around supporting the, those teachers who give up their time and energy to support those type of programs, going on the contest, and I'm still a state coordinator for Virginia TSA, do it every year, and looking for our chapters, our schools to come through. So what I also, when I look at this, and I'm looking at the pathways, and I look at what we're trying to do, the question that rings out to me is the number of students or have we captured the number of students that we're missing? That's one of the, even the things, like, I love the CTE high school. I was there when we begin that, that conversation when I was at the chamber, and went to Polytech and went on some of those trips down there. We have a high school, we're looking at that, but what are we doing to ensure that we engage as many students as possible with the opportunities that we have with CTE? Not if, if they're not, if they can't even be a part of that fifteen-hundred or twelve-hundred, I know that we're shoring up some of the programs there, but with the requirements that we have that are coming down the pipeline here, can you just go a little bit more in-depth for, for, you know, sake here? So what specifically are we doing to try to capture those students, particularly when they're getting out of elementary, going into middle school, which is such a critical time for those decision-making, to keep them on track so that we don't lose them? Because I just feel like if we really put some emphasis, if they're not the kid that's going to go four years to college, but they're a kid that can, that has an interest in one of these areas, the leadership skills that they're, the professional development, soft skills, so many things that they learn in those classes, just how we're able to possibly capture those. And if there's a budget implication, I know that we talked about Perkins funding, but if there's something that we should be looking at from a board level to support that.
Well, the beauty of CTE and the CTE high school is, it will not sacrifice any of the other programs at the current high schools. So no one is losing anything, if anything, our division is gaining the upper level of those things. And so, for example, if a student does not enter into the CTE high school and decides to stay at Maury High School, the EVMS program is a specialty program, but built into it is several CTE programs, for example, sports medicine, that's in the EVMS program, but it is CTE. And because it had gone over so well at Maury, we have now moved it in collaboration with Mr. Sut Miller, where it is now being done at all of the other schools, bringing it on one or two at a time. And so what we made a commitment to do is, if the CTE high school has something, it does not fill off something else, because not all high school students will go there. So if I wanted to go, for instance, and do engineering, the CTE high school is not the only place that I can get STEM in engineering. It will provide me a different level or a different pathway, but if I stay at my home school, guess what? It's just as rigorous, but it will not be a duplication of. So if I decided I wanted to go in and I want to do culinary, great, there will be a level of culinary that we can bring at the middle school level, which it will be for preparing, and into high schools, but the culinary at the CTE program is of a total different level, because now you've arrived at a specialization that your traditional high school could never provide. And so there is no sacrifice of one for the other. There is no draining of resources, because what you're doing is, you're actually focusing in on what is needed. For example, if a student wanted to go in one particular pathway and they are not ready to go to the CTE high school, then you have the virtual learning of the connection between the two. Work-based learning doesn't only move to CTE high school, work-based learning belongs to everyone. And what was going, what we're going to do is, the CTE high school has started an impetus where we're creating a pipeline. And so the discussions of what we're doing in pre-K, and many didn't know, there's a pre-K program at NTC. So what you're doing in pre-K, moving up through elementary, moving up to middle school, moving up through high school, now you're creating a stronger pipeline that exposes more students. The CTE high school is not going to be exclusionary in nature, so it's not the three-point-nine-nine-nine not only, it has opened the doors to many different students. So I believe it's bringing more to the table than taking off of the table. And making sure we understand it does not deplete the programs at the other schools. There are certain things that we can do, Granby, for example, Granby is our IB program, there's an IBCTE program that could be added there that could not go anywhere else unless that other school became an IB program. So there's certain things that will remain, and we will continue to provide a high caliber of learning for all students.
And should I just have one quick follow-up to that one, Dr. Boone? And you could probably, both of you all could answer this one. Do you think that we could possibly, as a district, do a better job of packaging and marketing the great work that we're doing in our programming? And I'm, and this is not a, a dish at anybody down there, but I'm just saying, I'm hearing great stuff here, but I'm just saying, do you think that we could possibly package it in a way that everybody gets to understand the great work?
You know, I think it's always that opportunity of what connects with folks at a certain time, because we've been very transparent about what's going on and, and, and been talking about this a lot publicly. And so there are always ways we can tell the story, but a lot of what we've been doing is working directly with the families. As Ms. Goshen talked about, students who are going to middle school, what are their options for exploratory, career exploration? And so how do you get them connected? Because that goes back home also to families. We hear some of the similar questions that, that come up when families visit the specialty program options, and they will ask some of the questions that are connected to the CTE work. But the, what we're doing at each of the middle and high schools get there, gets us there. But I think it's, there's, there's always that, that opportunity to make sure that more folks are connected to, to what's happening with the work. The other comment that I was, wanted to add was that when Ms. Goshen talks about the CTE connections with IB and everything else, College Board is doing more, even with the advanced placement courses. So if you are a student who has that interest and you want that deeper learning, that deeper knowledge about it, you can take an AP course, but, but College Board is expanding the number of CTE-connected courses. They've also worked on one for engineering, and that's connected. They work with Project Lead the Way and some work around that. So there are a number of those courses that are coming on board that we are also seeking to connect our students to.
And just to add about the marketing, Dr. LaGrande's department has been wonderful with working with us to get to the point where the message is out there. For example, we are doing, it's Computer Science Week, and her department will be at two or three different middle schools, taping the things that are going on. And we decided to do the coding for the different stages of robotics. So whether it's Dr. LaGrande supporting us, Danny Johnson supporting us of moving on CTE, it's not just Kenyatta Goshen, it is a team effort. Curriculum instruction coming in, ensuring up things that we need, facilities, IT, marketing, academic affairs, budget and financing. Okay, how do we get these kids to California for a week in July for a national competition? Budget and finance coming on, human resources. Okay, we need this special type of teacher. So CTE success is not a Kenyatta Goshen show or just our department, it's everyone in our division coming together. Principal support has been phenomenal. Just today, John Coleman talking with folks about looking at electives and looking at things, and before I could get out the door, the principal was like, we could do this, we could do that, we could change this. So it is about the culture of what we have here and doing right by kids, because our kids have limitless potential, and everybody's just supporting the one wheel that CTE has in this, but it's with core academics, it's with music, fine arts, it's everyone coming together. That's the only way CTE is working. We're not doing it in isolation, everyone is supporting us. Everyone is supporting us as we hope that we are supporting them equally as well. So, when you hear CTE, it's not just CTE, it's a whole academic affairs, fiscal finance, you name it. We all have come together to do right by our kids.
So, I'm going to jump in on this question about the marketing of our CTE. Do we have a one or two-minute commercial that highlights what we offer at Norfolk Technical Center? Or, let's just say at Norfolk Technical Center?
We are working on that, honestly. What we had to allow the students to do to get up and moving. And so, now what will take place is not only the technical center, because we don't want them, folks to just think it's only the technical center. They're going to the high schools to do snippets of each of the programs where students are in action and put it together as our marketing tool.
Yeah, I think that would be really good because while, if you're engaged, if you're an engaged parent, then you're going to seek out the fairs and you're going to get the information. But if you're a community member, the number one question that I get asked when I go to civic leagues are what are we doing for career and technical education? And, and I give them the handout that Mr. Bell has provided, I tell them to go on to the website. But in the days of social media and quick information snippets, if we can say, go and watch this, you know, active NPS Now segment or look at this quick commercial just to see, you know, live, not live footage, but just footage of what we are offering. Almost like how the, well, I think that would be really helpful for, for, for the, just the community in general to understand what is going on behind those doors, not just in the Norfolk Technical, but I guess also in the other high schools.
I was going to say, see the billboards though.
Yes, so you see, we have digital billboards that are throughout the entire city that rotate through, that highlight all of it. Yeah, they're on two sixty-four, they're up and down Virginia Beach Boulevard, Military Circle, Military Highway. And so, that has gone up because that's an easier celebration to get forward. And then, amazing Channel forty-seven, I'm sure if you tell them to do a video, it will be done. And to be quite honest, they've already started talking about that a long time ago. I just don't like the camera portion, so I've probably been holed up, I have to be honest. Yeah, that's what, we've changed that, the children will do it.
I, I do have, I would like to know what the credentials are that we do offer, and that can come, just, just list what they are.
Okay, I can list that for you. We're probably at about seventy-five, so I can get the list together. And what I can do is maybe share a copy of the annual report, and it's on VGOE's website, because every school division gets it. And it'll tell you how we fall with special populations. And special populations are more than students with disability. We are responsible for English language learners, single-parent students, students that they consider disadvantaged. We call them economic, it's a variety of things that we're responsible for. Completers, we are responsible for every year, we have to go back and survey our students who graduated the year before. Kind of where are you now? And the state rates us on that, and that's public information as well. And that all school divisions within the state must do that.
For the Governor Health Science Academy, there's an application process that goes along with that.
Governor's Health Science and Governor's STEM.
And STEM. So, what do we need to be doing as a board to help support you in that application process?
And I'll turn that over to Dr. Boone, because I think we had some agreements with previous boards. And so, we need a consensus of a current status, because you will be the ones that are actually moving it forward.
What we, so the, the governor's schools were connected to the academies within the Conference of CTE High School. And so, once we're firm in where our directions are with that, then we can work with the board to make those applications. We shared that information, I think, last year.
So, is it contingent on having a comprehensive career high school or contingent on the board accepting the academy, the pathway structure?
It's, it's contingent upon us having a direction, because once, we, we had to make a tweak in terms of our intention when the school changed from Lake Taylor to Bogota T. So, we, we made that notice. We just need to know which direction the board is intending to pursue. And then, we'll know how to pursue any particular opportunities around the governor's academies.
Because once you give a letter of intent to the state, then there's a, there's a timeline that you follow and the clock starts to tick. And so, we give the intent tomorrow, then by April of next year, there's a period of time where you have to go before the state board and, and explain what you're doing. There are certain meetings you have to have. And so, we have not done an additional letter of intent until we were sure the direction in which we're going.
Okay, so we need to do that as a board then?
Yeah.
Okay. I know that some other folks had some questions. Ms.?
Yeah, I want to revisit the Virginia Teachers of Tomorrow program. Just one question. When that program was previously active, what was the requirement to Norfolk Public Schools for any student who completed the program?
At that point, we did not have a requirement, but we started to discuss incentive programs, like an early hire, that you gave a promissory, that if a student successfully completed four years of an education program, went on to get the proxies and successfully completed and come back, that Norfolk would kind of support that. We moved away from Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow during a lot of budget cuts. And I'm one, if you ask me, I'm going to be honest, and that was several years ago. I think it's a great opportunity and time to bring it back, because now you have university support. Whereas, we were doing it on our own, now you have colleges and universities saying, we will partner with you. So, now a student who makes it through twelfth grade can move on and be supported at the high school, excuse me, at the college level. And that college level is now supporting their return to that particular division. When we did it before, they graduated, they went on, and they could say they were in Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, but it wasn't that post-secondary transition that was needed. And so, we have not, because we have not applied to go back to being a Virginia Teachers of Tomorrow program, we would need to come together and design how that would look or could look.
And, and if I can piggyback on that.
He's working with us.
I think one, if I can, you might piggyback. I think one of the challenges with the education as a CTE, well, as a career focus, is that, as we've talked a lot about CTE, there are certain things you can take right into the world of work, you know? And you can't do teaching until you've completed college. And so, there's that period of how do you continue and foster that engagement around the field, between high school, where there may have been a great deal of interest, and completing that major in college? And that's what has always been a challenge. I know of places where there were even scholarships that were given to students, because they said they would be education majors. And the students would be, that was their commitment until they went to college. They were education major one semester, they changed their major and they had, already had the scholarship. And so, they, by the time found out that that was going on, they had finished the first year, which was the scholarship. So, it's been tough to figure out, how do we navigate those four or so years between high school and becoming that teacher to keep folks engaged?
So, I know you had another question, Ms. Bassin, but I did want to try to get to the matters of the board. Is it a brief question?
Well, probably not as brief as you may like.
Okay, so let's do this then. Let's, let's get to matters of the board. Everybody's had the opportunity to ask questions. This is certainly not the last time that we're going to have this conversation. I think that it's actually probably brought up some more information that we would like to get. And then, we'll just make sure that we schedule some time to continue forward to talk about the other aspects of what we need to do as a board to support continuing the success that you all are having with what is going on right now. And certainly, we can just email Dr. Boone and Ms. Goshen the question that you have. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you for your support as we continue to grow. We have a long way to go, but with everyone's support, we'll get all of our students there. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, now on to matters of the board. I know that there were a few questions that some of the board members had had regarding some questions that they wanted to bring for us, for the entire board to have some consideration on. So, I wanted to make sure that we had some time allotted for that, as there may be some discussion with that. So, that being said, I know Ms. Campson had reached out to me already for a question in particular. So, I'd like to go ahead and give her the floor and allow her to share her thoughts with us.
Thank you. As everyone may remember, at our last meeting, Dr. Gabriel, Gabriel, sorry, directed me to work with Tanya on the School Board Accountability Plan. She declined, but when I talked to Dr. Gabriel again, she said, just move ahead with the things that you think we need to do. And so, I, of course, read once again through the Accountability Plan. And first of all, it's out of date, as we know, we don't have a current one in place. And second of all, it was not, there was no data, there were no goals, there were even no absolute goals, which are our student achievement goals. So, and looking over, I thought, well, what we really need to do as a new board is to come together and write our own plan. And the first thing you need to do, having done so many of these in the past, is that you need data. So, I took the, the three goals of the board and I put the priorities under each goal, the ones that matched. And then, I listed a beginning of the kinds of data that we would need to be able to have a good discussion about what we wanted to do under each of those priorities and, and to incorporate in our, our school improvement accountability plan. And following the procedure that we're given, that I just saw other people don't follow, because we just ask one of the staff members for data right here. But what I did following the hoops was I wrote up, typed up my whole thing, if anyone wants to see it, I have some copies, of all the data that would be really critical to determining what it is that the district needs to do under each of our goals. That's a starting point. And so, I, following the procedure, I gave that to Dr. Gabriel back in early November and to pass on to the superintendent. Dr. Gabriel got back to me and said the superintendent declined. And so, I then requested to go to the next step, according to the rules, which would be to ask the board to vote on directing the superintendent to provide the data that I felt we needed. And, because I was kind of hoping we could get moving along, because I know that we have a half-day retreat that is being put aside to work on this. And the first thing we needed was the data, not for me to write the plan, because no one person, of course, should be doing this. This should be a board activity, writing a new school improvement accountability plan. And so, that's where I am, was today, requesting that perhaps we could vote, so I could get the data that the board will need when they come together to do the writing of the plan. I certainly will not be writing it myself, you know, do accountability plans that way.
Okay, so let me, let me just dial back for a second, because you, you gave a lot of information at the beginning and I just need to put it into context for, for everyone, okay? We have, we have Ms. Bassin and Mr. Jordan, she has worked with the Accountability Plan in the past. And she had offered during that meeting to start on it, and then I had recommended that you join, because you had put forth lots of goals and priorities at the very beginning when we came together as a board. So, I thought that with your background and with what you had already presented, that you all would be a perfect fit. I, I don't know that I would use the word declined, but, but, but here's the thing.
Well, I could read that reply that you sent to me if you would like.
That's not, we can go back and watch the meeting and the discussion.
So, but, but we're going to move on from that, okay? Because we are all here to work towards accountability, transparency, and what is in the best interest for the kids. So, we are going to work together on this. And we are going to have a, a document that is going to be excellent. And, and it's going to show the accountability that we have, not just for us as a board, but for the entire division. When I sent that information to Dr. Boone, she didn't, she didn't decline it, okay? I just want to be clear, she did not decline it. She said it takes time and that it, some of the information, we already have been presented. And so, that's when I came back and I said, okay, let's go through and look at what we already have. Because what, what we had, what we had discussed is that it's in different pieces. PowerPoint presentation here, PowerPoint presentation here. When were we going to have it all collected together in one document, the Accountability Plan? You specifically asked for, can I have it on a one sheet so that it's easy for us to reference in the Accountability Plan, once we're going forth to the data? So, I don't, I don't want us to get tied up on our, right here, the semantics of it. What I want us to do as a board is to make sure that everyone has the information they need in order to make the decisions that we are asked to do as, as board members. And if that means having the data before us in a way that's easy for us to understand, then we should have it that way. And so, there was some compromise that we had on what information we've already had. You've already done some of the, the data entry, but there's still some more that's needed. And so, my ask with Karen, Dr. Bailey, and Dr. Boone is with the information that you had requested of me, which you did follow proper protocol, that's exactly how we, you asked the board, the board shares it with the superintendent. She comes back, and if we need to share it with the entire board, we share it with the entire board and see if there's a collective nod for the superintendent to do that. My ask would be to say, if we get the collective nod from the board for the information that Lauren would like, can we have that for us so that, before we go on break for the holidays? And that is the information that can be populated into the Accountability Plan. So that, when we come back in January and have the January retreat, that we have all of the information before us, the, the background information that has already taken place.
So that we can write it together as a team, because it's not something that one person should be doing.
This is, this is the entire board's Accountability Plan.
Right. And Madam Chair, I'm going to make a clarification. That Accountability Plan was done with full board participation, the previous board. So, I would like, you know, you to make that clarification and support that, that act. Second of all, the requests that have been made by board members have not been shared with the full board. So, I have no idea what the request is. So, I, for anyone else to be able to follow what data was requested by Ms. Campson or anybody else here, I haven't seen anything.
No, you haven't, because she, we're not in protocol.
We're outside of our, our norms on that. So, I am going to call that out, since we're calling out.
Well, no, we're not, we're not outside in the norms, because she put forth the request and I had sent it to Dr. Boone. And because there's time and there's concern about what was requested, I am now putting, I said, okay. This is, we're now at the point now where the entire board, board has to have a collective nod if we want to move forward with it. So, that's where, where we are right now, so.
I have copies of it, of my request, if you would like me to share them, that wasn't on my list of, when I was trying to follow the procedure.
Hmm.
I'm going to let Mr. Jordan go first, I saw his hand on the corner. I'll follow up. Oh, you're good. I'm going to follow.
I guess I'm a little confused. So, the, when the board adopted the Board Accountability Plan, we, we did so with the knowledge and understanding at the time. We were not adopting a school division comprehensive accountability system as, you know, as the division used previously. So, I'd just like to get some clarification, because when I hear Board Accountability Plan and School Improvement Plan, we had discussed at a previous meeting, trying to differentiate that, so.
At the last meeting, Dr. Boone shared with her senior staff, who were in agreement with her, that the, because I kept asking for a district, as you will recall, I've been asking over and over and over for a district accountability plan. And what Dr. Boone said was that the School Board Accountability Plan was what made the governance and that it was the overarching for all of the work they were doing. Remember, this is what we talked about last time, which is why I then thought, wow, this is even more important than I realized. If this is the plan that is overarching everything, which is, you know, fine, that, that's when we really did. And in reading the current plan, which was written a few years ago, it did not have the, you know, when you're, if you're going to do accountability, you need to have data to look at, to see what it is we need to improve. And then, you need to set a goal that's measurable. We don't have a single one of those on this Accountability Plan, that we do not have. Would you like me to read a few of them to you? There's nothing they, well, she's over there making faces. Well, she's over there making faces.
No, 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 no.
I'm just saying, that I'm concerned, I'm concerned...
Hold on a second, guys. We're going to, we're going to be respectful to each other. We're going to be respectful to each other.
Pumpkin, don't roll your eyes and make faces.
We are going to, we, we, we have a, we have a concern, we have a question that was brought up by a board member, and we are either going to say, "Yes, we want this information," or "No, we don't want the information." And then we are, we can talk about how we are going to use that information, but...
Madam Chair, if I'm, if I'm sorry, then, so this, so essentially, right now, I think we're talking about information that was requested. I think Ms. Bassin has said she didn't know what the information was that was requested. So, we're asking for data that, I think, in the response that came back from Dr. Boone, that we already have it in different formats. But essentially, we're voting on to have it placed in one centralized format, that we can vote on today, to have the administration be directed, to have to us before we go on break, so we can use it in January for our retreat. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Madam Chair.
So, it went for, I hit the floor.
I'm sorry.
I just want to, go ahead. I just want to be clear, and I said this previously, I just want us to be clear around what we are requesting. So, I think I understand what Mrs. Campson has advocated for, in terms of the comprehensive accountability system. What I'm trying to clarify is, what we currently have is not a comprehensive accountability system. And it's not a comprehensive accountability system by intent and design. It was created because, at the time, the board's work seemed to be misaligned, was not aligned with a focus around student achievement and other efforts. As Dr. Boone came onboard and started working with the theory of action and other things, we worked to try to align the board's work from an accountability perspective. If you, we, we, as you know, we borrowed it all from Quinn and others. And so, in that, when you go through and look at the whole description of, of a comprehensive accountability system, it requires a great deal of time, energy, and resource and support in getting down to the school board level, getting down to the school level. We do have a current Accountability Plan for the board.
Then I, I'm sorry, I have not seen that one with the current date on it. I, I apologize if there is one I'm asking, and it...
I'm glad. I think that we, we've had that, that's what we were showing, and what we've been talking about is trying to move away from the paper, and get it fully integrated into the iDashboard, and all those things are connected with that. Just, just a quick glance at this, and this goes back to what I was saying earlier in the policy piece, these, many of these indicators are in the plan. There are others that are here that, per recommendation, seem we should add to the plan. I think there's a process that we have for, for doing that, and don't see any problem with that. I just think we have to be very clear on what the Board Accountability Plan is, and what its intent was, and how that differs from a comprehensive accountability system. And it kind of almost aligns with the conversations we've had about an updated five-year strategic plan and other things. It takes a lot of bandwidth. So, if the board wants to go down the path of having a comprehensive accountability system, then I think that's the conversation we should have, and be able to get feedback from the administration, what will it take, and how do we go about making that happen, with recognition it's not something that you just build in a short timeframe, which I know Ms. Campson knows, and, but in terms of the existing Accountability Plan, you know, I'm very comfortable speaking to it. I think we've talked about it, I don't know if it was at the last meeting, we talked about it some when we were in Charlottesville. And I would just say that, since there's still some confusion about it, before we add more stuff to it, maybe we need to have another meeting that's just dedicated, maybe just a couple-hour meeting, that's just dedicated to what that current plan is, and how we were using it, and then we can have a full conversation around whether or not it is effective, or whether or not we need to go in a, in a different direction. But every time the conversation comes up, I think there are seven different, maybe eight different perspectives on what exists. And I think we need to take some time to make sure we are clear on what exists, what's there, so that we can then do an assessment of, you know, what needs to be deleted, or what needs to be added.
Or maybe what needs to be written from scratch, and we need to start again, and do something with the current board. Because my concern really rose when Dr. Boone was explaining about how this overarched all, all of the programs, and there's nothing measurable in the plan. There's no, there's not a single absolute goal. I don't, I'm not quite sure why it's titled Accountability Plan.
It's definitely a misunderstanding.
It was my concern. Maybe it was, you know, just a school board's alignment with something, but when you call it an Accountability Plan, and I know you know this, you have to have, this is where we are, this is our absolute goal we want to reach, these are the things that we want to do, you know, it's, instead of, we'll have more students make on-time graduation, you would say, "Next year, the number of students will increase from dot-a-dot to this." And then that, then we could measure it, and we would know, we then hold ourselves accountable for that movement. There isn't any of that in the current plan.
I, I think there is, it may need to be improved.
Maybe that would be something for us to sit down and look at, because I kind of went through, and I don't see it page to page, and I don't see goals, and certainly no absolute goals there. Absolute goals, Mr. Jordan, being ones that are directly related to the function of the school system, which is student achievement. That's what, that was, when I say that term, is what I meant. Thank you, and thank you for listening to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
I think, I'm not going to speak for my team, but certainly, I, I'm confused at this point, because I'm looking back at my notes of November 7th, when the focus of the work session was the Accountability Plan. That was the, pretty much the only topic there, a couple of, of shorter focused topics that day. And what I left with, and what we've been working on since then, paired with the conversations, so let me step back. When I introduced the current documents, and they are current, to the board in Charlottesville, and we agreed that that was a good introduction, we bring team to the table. So, I had Ms. Bailey, Dr. Bailey, Ms. Chavis, Mr. Foody here, so that we could walk through exactly what were in those two sets of documents. And so, from the notes that we took, and the direction that I've thought we had received consensus on were, were multifold. One is for the January 9th retreat, we were going to go back and look at the deeper aspects of what's going on with school improvement, for our comprehensive and targeted-supported schools. Around that, again, the Accountability Plan is the overarching umbrella, because all of these various data points are there. Mr. Clayton mentioned, "What about the schools that have red indicators?" And what were we doing for that? And we talked about each school that has a red indicator has a plan to address that. So, our takeaway for January the 9th was that we were going to bring that information as it links to the accountability data and planning. It's not a judgment of, on what the plan is or isn't. This is what I'm taking away, because we've been spending the last month readying for January 9th, and what would be a value-added retreat for the board. So, that was one piece of it around, again, what would happen as it relates to what we're doing for overall school improvement, how that links to the data and all of that. That's what I have here in my notes, that's what I, I took away from that. Additionally, Mr. Clayton talked about how it's presented, and shared some information. We went back and started looking at that information. We also said that day, that there were some adjustments we could make around the data for January 9th, but the new platform, or an enhanced platform, where the data were ready, available, would be a longer-term project, would be closer to the end of the year. Also, in that conversation, as Dr. Gabriel just described, Ms. Bassin said, "Well, I have worked on it, and I don't mind continuing to work." Dr. Gabriel asked for Ms. Campson to work with it. So, from my perspective, what I had been expecting, and there had been some conversations with Dr. Bailey, Dr. Gabriel referencing that group coming together initially, thinking that part of the work that would be led at the retreat would be very similar to the policy conversation we just had earlier. Those, those board members will work on something, bring it back as part of that four-hour retreat, and, and pair that into the agenda for, to be accomplished. So, where I am now is an extreme state of confusion, because we spent a month working to address what I thought we'd heard, what we discussed in agenda planning, as the focus for the January 9th retreat. If that is not the case, needing to know something sooner or later, because the staff certainly has the, has the right to have some holiday and, and winter break time, and if that is changing, we need to know immediately, so that we can adjust and pivot, to figure out what we bring forward to the board in a meaningful way.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. I think that the, what you had just described is certainly where we want to be for the January 9th retreat. Having that work ahead of time with Ms. Campson and Ms. Bassin and Dr. Bailey is going to be very important, because I do think that there are, we need to come together on getting this plan to the point where we are seeing the baseline data, and where we want to see our schools moving forward in the future. So, I don't have any issue with what you all have been working on thus far. I, I don't. Does anybody else have any issues with what the division has been working on thus far, with what Dr. Boone has just stated? Okay.
Are they working on some of the items that, that I would have liked to see us have, that information that I just, that we just passed around?
And that's the only thing that I've tried to add in there, because Dr. Boone said it, in her comments there, that the two of them were going to be working on this item, Ms. Bassin and Ms. Campson. And so, and I, I'm not exactly, I'm quite sure that Ms. Bassin has done a lot of work on it. Have you met with staff to, to talk about some of the items?
The, just the Accountability Plan.
In regards to this, have you met with any of the staff regarding this?
With Dr. Bailey, just to talk, and she's sent a message...
So, I'm quite sure, so you've been able to get some information in there, and so I, I think that it's only fair, that maybe the items and the experience that Ms. Campson brings to the table, that we can, we can bring those items in. Because I don't think that we're asking for new information, I just think we're asking for the same issue that I brought up in the meeting, was that we have all this information, but it's all over the place. It was just a better way of being able to read it, so that when we have the discussion in January, that we can have a productive four-hour meeting, and that we aren't trying to search for things. And so, with that, I, I think that we're all trying to get to the right place, and I think that we're coming with the right intentions here, that we can, I don't know if we necessarily need to say that we're going to throw, you know, throw it all the way out. No, I think that we really need to take a deep dive, and that everybody come together to look at what we have, what things need to be changed. So, with that, and I'm just in the essence of time, I'd just like to put a question on the floor, that we can determine, and I like to be able to, based on what we have here, instruct the superintendent and staff to be able to give Ms. Campson the request that she's asked for this additional data. I think that she's coming with the right intentions, to make sure that we have all this information placed, and, and a way that we can all see it, and that we can have a productive meeting in January, when we have that many retreats. So, with that, I like to, based on our board protocol norms, that it's gone through the chair, it's coming back here to the board now, that we go ahead and take up the question, and whether or not we're going to instruct the superintendent to complete that action.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on. I have also been invited to meet with Ms. Campson and Ms. Bassin, to talk about preparing documents in support of the school board retreat, with the thoughts in mind of completing most of that prior to the Christmas holiday. And so, I've asked to meet with them next week. So, if you could, I guess, make that a part of your question, you know, we're certainly willing to work in support of the needs.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, actually, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, going back to my notes on November 7th, I have the first note, is that Dr. Boone was going to go back and re, and review the Accountability Plan and create a crosswalk. So, of course, right there is, that's with the data for benchmarks, you know, multiple layers of data, so, you know, and then I do remember at the next, at one, not the next meeting, but like, another meeting, we talked about them doing it together, so.
Yeah, and I was just going to add, now, I can reset it. So, I'm looking, for example, at the dashboard that we went over last meeting. So, one of the first recommendations is number slash percentage of schools accredited, five-year trend data. So, in the current dashboard, we have 13, 14, 29 percent, 13 of 45, 14, 15, 39 percent, 17, 44, goes all the way up to school year 17, 18, and then it has a target for school year 18, 19, at 71 percent, and an annual target of 10-plus percent per year, and the data source is the VDOE database report card. And it goes on with on-time graduation, SATs, teacher retention, all that. So, I just want to make sure that, before we ask the superintendent to go off and redo something, that if there's something that we can share that shows what we have, and maybe then revise the gap, because this, the information is there. I just want to make sure we, we're on the same page with that.
A lot of this information is there, a lot, and some of it is already in the dashboard section of the Accountability Plan, as you were looking at it. So, the question on the floor, then, Lauren, how do you feel about having the meeting with Dr. Bailey, Ms. Bassin, and...
Dr. Bailey mentioned it to me, I didn't know that we, she's probably already sent something out, I haven't been able to see, because I came right from that to here, and I, I'm perfectly, I, when I emailed Dr. Bassin, I said, "Let's get together."
Okay, so, so, so let's do this. I don't have an issue with any of the data that you're asking for here.
We need every bit of that data to do an Accountability Plan.
I don't have an issue with that. But to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what is already present, what we have, and anything that would require new investment or time, I do think we need to be clear on that, because I, I, I think we, if it's, if they're going to have to create extra programs, or an extra piece to add on to it, I think that we're going to have to understand what that time is. Ideally, we need to have it before the January 9th meeting.
Well, because the chair, I did not envision the January 19th retreat being, or whatever the date is of it, being, listening to a lot of PowerPoints, just feeding us more data. My, my, mine was to have the data ahead, so we've all previewed the data, and had ideas about what would be our direction of, of what we would like to see happen, so that it would be a working session, not a listening session.
It will be.
Where we were actually doing some preliminary framework and sketching out of where we were going.
We were, we were just talking about that in agenda planning, of how we were going to break it up. Dr. Boone, we were going to do it in, in two big chunks, with exactly what we had discussed as far as the, the comprehensive schools, what the division is doing with that, and then what we, as a board, want to do moving forward, with adding the extra pieces on to it, the layers of the goals, and, and understanding what is being put in place in order to reach those goals.
And plus, I also agree with what Rodney said, we need to know what it is that we're using it for, because as, as we heard about, you know, it's overarching things, which I think is fine, I don't have any problem with that at all, it's just that when I look at it and, and, and don't see, you're right, we have the dashboard that shows where we want to have our schools at each time, what we need is, how are we getting them there? And, and, and so, that was what intrigued me about it, and, and also the thought that with the new board, it's time to have something that reflects where the board as a whole stands, you know, four, four people here are new. To me, this is a very critical document, and, and we don't have forever, the clock, as I've said before, is ticking on the lives of our children, and we have children that are spending their life and their school career in uncredited schools.
So, if I'm hearing right from Ms., from Dr. Bailey, so there's a meeting that you all are going to have to address these items?
I've requested.
That, that you've requested, and that one. So, if that's the case, and Ms. Campson, if you are amenable to it, is that good enough?
Oh, yeah, I told Karen, I thought it was a great idea.
Can, I'm going to take my question off the table, and we can, if we're all good, and general consent that you'll report back out from the meeting that you all have, and working towards that?
Well, well, hold on a second. Dr. Bailey?
Well, no, I'd let that one finish, Karen, because my comments are different.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, I know I put a question on the table, so I'll take that back, if it's, if that's good, that that's what you're going to do. I just want you to be able to...
Will we receive data, or will...
Yes, I think...
Here's the thing.
Yes, I think.
I want, I think what will happen is a discussion and hopefully a consensus on what the data are that, that are being requested versus a unilateral data request. And I think that's what I'm hearing Dr. Bailey saying, to, to, to bring the two board members into the room, let's talk about what the goals, let's find consensus on data and let's move forward with that. Because my greatest fear is that, yes, we, everybody can ask for data and yes, I can respond, but that could be seven different data sets. And we would find ourselves not having the focus and time to support the schools, but really doing the focus to report, to, to do what's here. And very respectfully, while the accountability plan is important and the driver of this work, we haven't waited for the adjustments to the accountability plan to do our work. And that's why we were able to on November seventh, to talk about what's going on. And that's why we are ready and, and prepared, uh, for January ninth to talk about the very specific day-to-day activities and the plans that we've put in place to drive progress in those comprehensive and, uh, targeted schools.
So, so I want to be respectful of every board member's request for information and the process that we have in place for that. So what I'd like to propose then is I would, um, I would like for you all to have your meeting. I want to know that these items are going to be discussed, um, with Dr. Bailey. If they cannot be met, we need to know because then we need to be able to, as a board, collectively say that we want these items requested. Um, and again, the goal is still going to be to see if we can get the information before, y'all are going to be meeting next week?
Yes.
Um, to get the information before we go out on break.
Right.
Okay? Because some of this information does already exist, but, but there is a request for the, for some other information that Ms. Campson would like. How do you feel about that, Ms. Campson?
That's fine.
Okay.
And I just want to see us continue to move forward instead of talk, talk, talk and no action.
Well, you know what? We're eight different people and we are all going to get to this point and, uh, satisfy what the needs are for everyone as best as we can. So, um, I think that that is a, that is a good, I think, concession that, that we can do for today. You feel okay with that, Dr. Boone? So, um, I'll be looking forward to hearing how that meeting goes and, uh, what else needs to be done from this perspective, um, after you all have it. Okay. That being said, uh, any other items for matters of the board? Ms. Bassin?
Um, I'd like to know when, um, if you've had a chance, uh, to talk about, uh, the later start times hearings.
The hearings?
Like what the timeline is for, uh, I saw information around the Lake Taylor K eight.
Yeah, so.
So we have a resolution in place and?
So today we discussed that in our agenda planning and Mr. Richter's going to be coming in on December the nineteenth. He's going to open with the discussion of the school start times. Um, we're looking to do a, a timeline overview with the board to make sure that everybody is up to speed with where we started, where we are right now, and what we need to do if we are going to put a plan in place before the, uh, school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Okay? And, um, and I, I did ask Dr. Boone, you know, how we want to, uh, organize the public hearing on that. And I think we want to, um, gauge how the meeting on the nineteenth goes, um, to determine if we're going to do a combination hearing or if we're going to keep them separate. And that's as, that's as best as I can share with you right now.
A combination with the Lake Taylor piece.
Mm-hmm. Right, with the edu, like putting the school start times with a public hearing on the educational planning piece for Lake Taylor K eight.
May I just ask a clarification on that? So the nineteenth, this is, that's our business meeting, so we're doing something?
We're having the workshop, the workshop portion of the business meeting.
Is that going to be the only thing on the workshop agenda?
Yeah, it's going to be school start time and it's going to be follow-up discussion on the Lake Taylor.
Well, it's the educational planning.
Planning, yeah.
School start time is part of, as a subset of that.
Is it, is it possible that the, if we're going to do the workshop on the day of the business meeting, that it not cut into the, uh, normal closed session items? Because I, I feel like there are things that we also need to be to deal with, with personnel and student support and legal matters. And I know the last couple of workshops, I feel like it's, it has truncated that piece, so.
We're, we're looking to start the closed session at five-thirty. And, um, so we have the educational planning piece going from four to five-thirty, and then our closed session going from six, no, from five-thirty to about six-forty-five, so that we can start our formal meeting at seven. You will?
Chair, um, two quick things, uh, just in reference, because it's just making me think, because I've heard it several times, um, just want to point out that resolutions, actions of a previous board annually, June thirtieth, end. And so if there's something that's in place, yeah, a brand-new board comes in, um, that if there are resolutions or actions that have been taken, um, and that we need to continue to work on and take up under this board, then we need to, you know, we need to kind of bring it to us. Because I've heard it a couple of times, but a brand-new board happens particularly, um, June thirtieth. So it's the same thing, lay on the table, that type of stuff down there. So, um, I've just heard it a couple of times. And so it just kind of makes me do a check mark and to say, hey, what things were taken under resolution? I'll give you a perfect example. Your board, on the prior board, had a discussion and talked about the, um, about Booker T. Washington High School and the CTE, and you all took a resolution up. Um, and you explicitly talked about in respect that we couldn't inform, that we couldn't instruct a new board that they could not, they weren't going to change the name, or that they couldn't change the name, but that it was the express interest of this board at that time, that they couldn't change it. So in, it was brought that, a brand-new board can come in and do what they wanted, but you couldn't tie the hands of a different board. So my thing is, is that if we have any resolutions that are out there, I'm not saying that I'm against any of them, I'm just saying, I just heard it a couple of times, we just need to bring it so that we are up to speed as new board members, um, of any particular resolutions that we need to be aware of and, uh, actions that are ongoing. That's all. The other piece of that, second piece is Booker T. Washington High School. I brought it up about the one hundred. Um, and I, and it just remind me again that, Dr. Boone, we got to, um, to talk to you about that, or Mr. Coleman, or anybody, if we've heard anything, um, I know that there's some work happening, but what we can do as a board to support that, um, you know?
Can you repeat that?
They, they have a centennial.
The centennial.
They're running one hundred. And, and so we want to be able to definitely do something.
Oh, that's exciting.
I know that the city has, um, I know that there's been some outreach to the city and the city's working on some stuff, and I just want to make sure that the board's a brust of it and that we can support those activities.
And, and had enough ahead of time so that we can all be involved. Because our calendars are filling up so fast.
Madam Chair, ju- just for clarity, so I had, uh, sent an email recommending that we reestablish the Board of Distinction or Board Development portion to our work sessions. Because I, I think we need to, I mean, just any board member, board, board that comes together just takes time. So the, just in response to the point about the resolution and the naming, what was being discussed at the time was tied to the naming policy. And so there was some question in terms of the legal aspects specific to the naming policy in terms of what we could and could not do. In terms of later start time, educational planning, or mixed income pre-K, or any of these other things that may have occurred, whether it was last year or, or five years ago, it's not functional really for, you know, school divisions to, I mean, a big system just can't turn and stop annually. So I think we need to, I agree with you, we need to come and kind of talk about, you know, what is it that we have underway, um, how we advance it, how we, uh, redirect it or whatever the case may be. But I just wanted to clarify that what, what took place with the naming piece was different from what took place with the, uh, uh, the resolution around start time and other resolutions that we, that we've taken, something specific to the policy.
Yeah. And I mean, my biggest thing is just, I just hear a lot of references to what the prior board did, which is great. I love the historical knowledge, but I also want to make this board aware, um, that you're not beholden or that your hands are tied to whatever a prior board did, that if this board decides that it wants to go in a different direction, it has the authority and the power to do so.
That's correct.
But we also need to be informed, and it's just, like I said, there's a lot of information. We can say it's in board doc and things like that, but sometimes there's stuff buried in there. Um, I will say, Mr. Jordan, you do a great job of being a great archivist and historical knowledge piece, and you sent out the emails, the links, and I just don't know where you get the time to do all that, but we appreciate.
People ask, I'm just trying to share.
But, you know, it, that, there's stuff that's in there, but it's just, I'm still trying to get us to the point where we can bring all that information.
I agree a hundred percent on streamlined board docs. I'm with you on that.
Yeah. So, can I, can I get a clarification? So until, uh, unless there is a resolution stating otherwise, um, do we agree that the resolution currently in place, that the division should continue to work as directed by that resolution?
Are we talking about the specific one?
The later start times?
The later start times?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I don't have an objection to that.
I'm just saying, it's just, I, it comes up, well, prior board voted on this, that, and I'm like, all right, well, you know, so.
Do you have a list of the resolutions then?
I do.
I think that was really the only one that we had.
The only one.
Yeah.
But there was a resolution about moving the CTE school. Wasn't that a resolution?
No.
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 What was that?
It was just board consensus. The only resolution, the, the only resolution, uh, was, that held us to a specific timeline was the school start times. And we're going to go over that on the nineteenth because that, we need to come back to that conversation so that we can have the benefit of what he has learned thus far in the community conversations, so.
We're moving to a February action, whatever it is, right?
Yes.
That is our deadline.
Yeah, the deadline.
It's coming in.
Yes.
Madam Chair, uh, one final request. Uh, going back to the nineteenth, there was a email that went out related to the, uh, superintendency mid-year and guess annual evaluation process. Can we add that forward discussion under personnel matters for the nineteenth meeting so that we can be clear as a full board and a governance team what we're doing? Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Went a little bit over on time, but our meeting is now adjourned.